Notice that we have a turn of service by the town clerk for the posted meeting. So we're a legal meeting. Notice that the emergency exits are up front and down back. It may not be the entrance through which you entered the building. You want to make sure to know if there's an emergency or how to get out. Can everybody hear me okay? We're not often in the gym, so I want to make sure that the folks in the back. I got thumbs up in the back, so it's great. We have non-residents C section at the back. Where's non-residents? Non-residents, raise your hand so I know where you are.
I got one for her.
Back there is the non-residents. We know this is the non-residents that get approval of town meeting to allow them to remain. These are town officials that are non-residents that are staying here and staying with their boards. We have Karen Polet from the veterans, Jamie Guinness from IT, Nathan May, town governors, Michael McVud, police, Mike May, parkmaster, Mike Seale, conservation, Peter Moore, town administrator, Sean Schoel, treasure collector, Gene Ivan Sullivan, conservation intern. We also have, and these are professional people that assisted some of the presenters today. We have Jonathan Silverstein, Patrick Jones, Gary Lapore, Catherine Vining, Charles Hitchcock, and Jeremy Scanlon. All those in there, allowing those people to remain on the floor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, declare that that passes and you're welcome to remain where you are until all is settled. I'm Jim DeShaw, I'm your moderator. All of my listening things, I make sure I cover for everybody. The front table here, we have town council, Dale next to me. We have my assistant moderator, Rayson Kelly, who has once again raised a clock course, which is great. And to remind everybody, presenters have a five-minute clock. Anybody speaking from the floor gets two minutes and can only speak once to an hour. Here on there, we have the town treasure collector, the town clerk, the town governors, the town administrator, the selectman, and the advisory board. We have several announcements of personal privileges. And two are to recognize town officials. The first of which is Edwin Sullivan, who was a longtime trustee of the Veterans Memorials who passed away last year. And we want to recognize Ed for all of his great service to the town and to our veterans. Second, would like to recognize Keith Polansky for 40 years of serving on the advisory board. I believe the selectmen may have got a presentation for him? Is Keith here? I don't see Keith. I will let Lynn Fidler, Chair of the Select Board, read the proclamation.
Good evening. This is for Keith Polansky. Forty years' service as a valued member of the advisory board. That is very impressive. And this board hereby honors and thanks him for his commitment. We will send it to him or have him come meet us.
I think I worked with Keith for most of those 40 years. It seems that way anyways. And he always gave his 110% for everything that he did, and I appreciate all of his service. And lastly, would like to recognize Terry Wenig. We ended up having a conflict this year with the high school having a play in the auditorium. And she managed to finagle it so that we could move into the gym so we could still have our town meeting without being disruptive. And she even did this on her anniversary. So, thank you, Terry. At this point in time, I'd like to call out the Marshfield Police and Fire Color Guard to present the colors. And we're going to have one of Marshfield's finest, Jason Lucetti, Marine Corps vet, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a treat this evening. We have Kylie, Brandon, and Nathan from the Marshall airs to do our National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Very nicely done. Okay. So how many, do a quick survey here. How many are familiar with our former government open town meeting? Raise your hand. How many are new? I welcome all your newcomers here. Hope you find it an interesting evening. Israelia is the purest form of democracy, and it's great to see how different people think. If you can shut off your cell phones, silence your cell phones at this time so we're not disruptive. A note for everybody, all discussion happens from a microphone. So there's one back there and this one up front here. I will recognize you when it's your turn to speak. I alternate microphones, so it might seem a little strange, but I try to get it so that if four people are queued up at the back microphone and one person gets in the front, those four at the back get to speak first. So I try to take you in order as much as I can. You get two minutes to speak on the floor. Once you're done speaking, that is the end of your time to speak on that particular subject matter. Voting is by a show of hands, after which I will declare the vote. If necessary, I'll go to a standing vote if I don't think it's a clear vote. My vote, my declaration can be questioned by seven voters. If seven voters rise, then we would go to a new vote with a standing vote. For standing votes, everybody needs to be in a seat. Once everybody's in a seat, then I will call for the standing vote. The doors will be closed. Nobody can get in, nobody can get out. But you need to be sitting in order to have a standing vote. And what, once the standing vote comes, there are counters which are around the room. And I'm going to go read their names. Section one, Jeb Deloche, if you can rise. Section two, Anne Marie Seketti. Section three, Andy Wenig. Section four, Kevin Robinson. Section five, Susan Sloan, which is the bleachers left. Section six, Cindy Castro, bleachers right. And section seven is Terry Wenig. So those people will count you. They'll indicate that your vote has been counted and indicate that you sit down. We will take all of those votes. First, we go with the A's, then we go with the Nays, and then we'll tabulate the vote from there. So you can all see what the actual vote is. There are rules in the front of your warrant. Those are town meeting rules. Want to highlight rule seven, nine, 11, and 14 specifically. There's a rule for moving the question. If you think that you have heard enough discussion on a particular article and it's been going on for a while, you can move the question. You do need to be at a microphone to move the question. I am not obligated to take your motion. If I think that there's still discussion to be had, I may not accept your motion. But if I accept your motion to move the question, I will immediately go to a vote to see if your moving the question is approved. And if it's approved, then we go to a vote on the article with no further discussion. So that's kind of the basics for what we get into. Now, this is somewhat of an unusual town meeting. For those of you who are unaware, we had some issues with some of our financial articles where we didn't have some money in there for the South Shore Voke. We need to reexamine the budget to see if we can rearrange our budgetary guidelines to be able to underwrite that money for the South Shore Voke. We have some seats up in front, too, if somebody needs a seat. So we are going to postpone the financial articles. And I'll give you the exact articles. We're going to postpone those until June 2nd. So we'll have to come back to vote the financial articles on June 2nd. So I have several miscellaneous motions here that I want to cover. First, there's a motion for Article 5 in the special town meeting warrant. I'm taking that out of order, and that article is going to be postponed indefinitely. So we are not going to be discussing Article 5. All those in favor of postponing Article 5, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes. We're going to take an article to postpone Articles 2 and 6 to a date certain, which is going to be June 2nd of 2025. And that motion is, I move that the town vote to take Articles 2 and 6 out of the April 28th, 2025 special town meeting warrant. Take them out of order and move them to be the last two articles of the special town meeting, at which point I intend to move that the special town meeting be recessed until Monday, June 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Marshfield High School. Whether it's the auditorium or gym at this point in time is going to be TBD, I would think, for further consideration. So, right. So all those in favor of taking Article 2 and Article 6 and postponing it to June 2nd, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I see that passes with majority. Motion number three. I move that the town vote to take Articles 2 to 4, so that's 2, 3, 4, and 7 out of the April 28th, 25 annual town meeting warrant. Take them out of order and move them to be the last four articles of the annual town meeting, at which point I intend to move that the annual town meeting be recessed until Monday, June 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM at Marshfield High School. And that, again, those are the financial articles that we need to look at in order to balance the budget. And that's the big point that we have is we need to balance the budget. So all those in favor of postponing Articles 2, 3, 4, and 7 from the annual town meeting warrant, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that that passes. And I move that, so at the end of the warrant, so once we're all done with what we're doing, then I will make a motion that we postpone the special and the annual town meeting until June 2nd. But we'll do that at the end of what we're doing tonight. So we're taking all the financial articles off the table this evening. We've got plenty of stuff left to talk about, but it would be great, and I think it's possible that we can actually do all the rest of these articles this evening if we sort of stay onto a mission. Now, we do have in the special town meeting warrant, that leaves us about 20 articles, we are linking a number of articles together. So as you all know, or you may not know, we take our articles by lottery when we're outside of the financial articles. So we have our bingo ball drum administered by our town clerk, and we take the numbers as they come up and discuss that article. But we are linking a number of articles because they are similar articles. We are linking Articles 8, 9, 10, and 11 that all have to do with ADUs with the planning board. Articles 13, 15, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 are assessor articles. They have to do with different tax relief measures. And Articles 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 that are all DPW articles. And those will all be linked because it's just going to be easier to have the presenters come up here once and deal with that. So our first article at this point is, what's our first one? Who's up?
11, so it's 8, 9, 10, 11.
So 11 was the first. So we're going to start with, 11 is up, so we're going to start with Article 8. One note, we do have a, you guys should all have been able to get in a RADA sheet. There were a couple of minor inconsistencies in the way the warrant was written. This sheet shows you what the errors were and corrects them so you know what we're Well, we got chairs in the front here. We have chairs, we have some seats in the front, and if we need more seats in the back, we'll need to arrange that. Does everybody, is everybody able to get to a seat? Okay, Article 8. Again, this is our special town meeting warrant. Article 8, now I read a motion. The motion is not necessarily what you see in the warrant. The motion is how the article's being moved for discussion. Article 8, "The Planning Board Moves That the Town Vote to Amend the Marshfield Town Code Division 3 Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 305 Zoning. Article 11 Special Permit Conditions, Chapter 304-1109 Residential Accessory Apartments, and Article 12 Special Regulations Set forth in Article 8 of the April 28th, 25 Special Town Meeting Warrant." And that's being presented by the Planning Board, Mr. Guimond.
Thank you. Greg Guimond, Ice House Lane. Next slide. Last year, the state signed into law, a new law that allows by right accessory dwelling units statewide. The state has issued the final regulations to assist cities and towns in adjusting their local bylaws with the new accessory dwelling unit law. After town meeting, last town meeting, a working group was formed by the town administrator. This working group included the select board chair, the planning board, and zoning board chairs, town council, town administrator, building commissioner, town planner, conservation commission administrator, and the border health agent. The group met several times and came up with the following four articles. Bob Galvin has spoken with the Attorney General's office several times to make sure the language that you have before you is in compliance with state law. Next slide. Article 8 removes and reserves for future use the current Section 305-1109 Residential Accessory Apartments bylaw, which was required, which required a special permit. It inserts a new Section 305-1207 Protected Accessory Dwelling Units, or APDU, which does not require a special permit. An applicant would file with the building, a building permit with the building department, and like other building permits, this application would be sent to other town departments for review and comments. With these applications, the departments would have 21 days to provide comments to the building commissioner. The Protected ADU must meet the local Board of Health and Conservation Commission requirements. And this article also sets out the purpose, applicability, review standards, and submittal requirements for the creation of a Protected Accessory Dwelling Unit. Next slide. Article 9 replaces the existing residential accessory apartment desk.
Great. Let me deal with one, although we've got them all gang together.
I was going to explain them all together.
Oh, okay. That'd be fine.
All right. Article 8 was for the Protected Accessory Dwelling definition. Article 10 adds the new definition for gross floor area that complies with the state's Protected Accessory Dwelling Unit Law. Article 11 removes the existing residential accessory apartment category number 19 in the Table of Use for accessory uses and replaces it with a new accessory unit number 19 that complies with the state's Protected Accessory Dwelling Unit. The Planning Board held public hearing on March 10th for all zoning articles for this upcoming town meeting. And in the Planning Board's meeting of March 24th, it voted favorably recommendation of all four accessory dwelling protected unit articles. All set. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that was the explanation on all of the ADU articles, which is 8 through 11. We're going to start with Article 8 and take them in order. Any discussion on Article 8? Seeing none, I'll go for a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 8, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that that passes. Article 9, again, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll go for a vote. Again, this is, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 9, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Declare that Article 9 passes. Article 10, now this is different. This is two-thirds vote. Any discussion on Article 10? Seeing none, I'll go for a vote. All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that Article 10 passes by two-thirds. And Article 11. Article 11 is another majority vote. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 11, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that Article 11 passes. Thank you, Mr. Guimond. Okay, so the next one is Article 17. So this is going to be Articles 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, and these are all from the assessors.
Good evening. The Board of Assessors is recommending the town to adopt these five articles that will help bring relief to disabled veterans and seniors in town. Article 13 will increase the current income limit of $40,000 to $60,000 for existing deferral clause 41A. This will help current and possibly new property owners who meet all other requirements take advantage of deferring their property tax at a 2% interest rate. Article 14 is to see if the town will adopt Clause 22H. This will allow for a full exemption to surviving parents or guardians of soldiers and sailors, members of the National Guard, and veterans who have lost their life during active duty or suffered an injury or loss documented by the VA which was the cause of their approximate death. Article 15 will increase the current asset amount of $40,000 by the COLA yearly for existing clause 17D, senior surviving, senior and surviving spouses. This will help current and possibly new property owners who meet all other requirements take advantage of this exemption. Article 16 will increase the current exemption amount of $175 by the COLA yearly for existing clause 17D, the senior and surviving spouse. This will bring more relief to the seniors and surviving spouses who are eligible for this exemption. And Article 17 will increase the current veterans exemption amounts by the COLA yearly for the existing clause 22, disabled veterans. This will bring more relief to the qualifying disabled veterans who are eligible for this exemption. I met with the Council on Aging Board of Directors, and they are in full support of these articles. The COA felt that these updates and changes would benefit seniors and veterans in Marshfield, particularly those that are financially limited and struggling to remain in their homes. The Veterans Office has expressed support for these articles as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So these are all majority vote articles. As you've heard, these are all geared around tax relief for different deserving parties in town. So I'm going to do as what we did before. I'm going to go for, I'm going to start with Article 13. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Again, majority vote. All in favor of Article 13, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Declare that that passes. Article 14, seeing no discussion, go to a vote. All those in favor of Article 14, please raise your hand. Declare that that passes. Article 15, any discussion? Pardon me? We already voted on that article at this point. So if you've got a question, get up to a microphone. So if I wasn't clear about that, if you have a question on an article, you need to get to a microphone. If you've got a quick question on 14, and if it's a point of information, I'd welcome you to get to a microphone if you just want some clarification, but we've approved Article 14. Okay. Article 15, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Article 15, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that Article 15 passes. Article 16, any discussion? Again, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 16, please raise your hand. And Article 17, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 17, please raise your hand. Thank you. Declare that that passes. And for those in the back who are standing, we're getting some more seating set up. Okay, we're going to pull out another set of bleachers. It's going to make a lot of noise. Just like that. So that way, everybody that's in the back get into a seat. It's going to be important if we ever go to a standing count. Are we going to get new tellers to count back there? Okay. So we'll let you know who the teller is. But all of you guys that are in the back over there, we do have some seats up front if you want to. Expensive tickets to the show. I've got orchestra seating up here. Next article is, pardon me? Next article is number 22. And we're getting into all of our linked articles. Article 22 is a DPW article. That links Articles 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23, and those are all DPW articles. Now, in these, because they are slightly different, I'm not sure who's speaking from the DPW on these, we may take these in order to vote them because they are different subject matter for each of these, whereas the other ones were all sort of similar in tone. So I will read the first motion on number 18. Article 18, "The Board of Public Works Moves That the Town Vote to Transfer the Sum of $70,000 appropriated from the April 22 Annual Town Meeting, Article 4, Number 184 Utility with Plow Article, and the Sum of $5,245.72 appropriated from the October 22 Special Town Meeting, Article 5, Number 185 Utility Truck, and Apply Said Funds to Pay the October 16, 2023 Special Town Meeting, Article 8 Chevy K2500, Number 185." So who's presenting from the DPW?
Ken Ryan, DPW engineer.
Ken Ryan, DPW engineer. So for this article, basically, we had charged the wrong account. So we are trying to clean up the accounting and get it a charge to the appropriate one.
Okay, that, you all set?
Yes.
This is going to be a majority vote when we get to it. For the advisory board, Paul DeCristofaro.
Good evening, Paul DeCristofaro, Nine George Street. Back, as Ken said, back in April, in October town meetings of twenty-two, there was votes to reappropriate funds originally approved for the purchase of the truck of the snowplow, eighty, one eighty-four, and move those funds to purchase the vehicle one eighty-five, the Chevy twenty-five hundred. The funds were taken from the wrong account, creating a deficit in those accounts. This was due in part to the complexities encountered during the conversion process in the unit's financial system, whereas the charter accounts were in transition. As Ken said, it's basically an accounting general entry, and the advisory board unanimously approved the article. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion from the floor on article eighteen? Seeing none, I'll go for a vote. Again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of article eighteen, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Declare that article eighteen passes. So we're going to go to article nineteen. The Board of Public Works moves that the town vote to transfer the sum of twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars appropriated from the April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting, Article four, for the mini excavator, the sum of fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars appropriated from the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting, Article four, for the mini loader, and appropriate the sum of three thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-six, thirty-six cents from water retained earnings, and apply said funds to April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting, Article four, to the mini loader.
Again, this is the same issue we had before where it was a wrong account that it was charged to, and we're trying to fix the accounts.
Okay. Advisory board.
Same as last.
Eighteen and nineteen are the same.
Okay. Again, this is going to be a majority vote. Discussion from the floor. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of article nineteen, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Declare that that passes. Article twenty, the Board of Public Works moves that the town vote to transfer the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from solid waste retained earnings, the sum of three hundred thousand dollars from wastewater retained earnings, and the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from water retained earnings to defray the cost, to defray costs related to the FY twenty-twenty-five enterprise budgets.
So with this article, we're taking money out of our retained earnings to offset other costs that we have in those enterprise funds.
Mr. DeCristofaro?
Yeah, the enterprise retained earnings are a separate surplus account for water, wastewater, and solid waste. Generally, we want these funds to be used for capital and maintenance improvements as well as unforeseen operating, and mostly to mitigate the need to increase user fees based on five-year projections. The operating budgets historically have been lower than actual spending over the past few years, which brings this article to us every year typically. I will say the proposed budgets that are in the work for next year for twenty-six have increases of about thirteen percent versus four percent last year, which should bring that budget closer to actual spending in twenty-six. Advisory board voted unanimously to approve as written.
Okay. Discussion on article twenty? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of article twenty, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Declare that that passes. Article twenty-one, the Board of Public Works moves that the town vote to increase the FY twenty-twenty-five wastewater residual waste appropriation by the sum of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from a hundred and seventy-eight thousand six oh six to three hundred and eight thousand six oh six for additional wastewater residual waste funding, and to meet said expenses, transfer the sum from wastewater retained earnings.
For this article, our funding for our wastewater residual disposal was underfunded. There's very limited places that we can take that sludge, and therefore, right now, we're looking that we're going to overspend, so we're proposing to take money out of our retained earnings and use that to offset the increased costs.
Okay. Advisory board?
Yeah, this article is to handle the increased cost of sludge handling and disposal. Again, this is an area where the budget is challenging, whereas the budget is set before price increases is known. As Ken mentioned, moreover, there's only two facilities in the region that we can, that we're using at the point. We want to keep those locked in, otherwise we'd be paying quite a bit more for transportation further and further away. The current year budget was reduced, this current year was reduced by about ninety thousand in twenty-four. Next year's proposed budget is about a twenty-seven percent increase. Again, bringing the budget closer to actual spending, reducing the need to transfer these retained earnings. Advisory board voted unanimously to approve as written.
Okay. So discussion on article twenty-one? Again, that's a majority vote. Get to a microphone.
Yes, good evening. Martin Clary, thirty-eight Ellis Avenue, Rexham. I do not know if this applies, we're talking about the water. I'm talking about the hydrants. I don't know if this applies to this article or not. A lot of hydrants around the town of Marshfield are dead on the water or out of service. Do we have a service, gentlemen, that goes around and flushes these lines to put new hydrants in before they become ineffective?
I'm not sure that that's actually pertinent to this.
It is not.
Okay, that's beyond the scope of this article. I don't know whether that's directed to the fire department?
I understand it was the water.
Flushing hydrants, would that be under fire?
I understand it was the water department.
Let me, let me, let me finish. Let me do what I'm doing.
No, it can also be underwater.
No, so that would be underwater. That's not what's discussed here.
We had a severe fire at a level of building over sixty-five years old, and they went for two hydrants that did not work over there.
Okay.
And we're still waiting for the hydrant to be installed, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you can take that back and have a discussion with the water, that would be a lovely thing. Okay, thank you. Any other further discussion on article twenty-one? Okay. If you want to discuss things, please get in line at the microphone. Don't wait until the next speaker's done just to keep things moving.
Steve Leahy, thirty-one Setts Greg Drive. Sorry about that.
It's, no, it's okay. Everybody's learning today.
One question. Was it that the price of accepting the sludge went out, or was it the amount of sludge that we were sending?
Can you answer that?
It's more about the pricing.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on article twenty-one? Seeing none, I'll go for a vote. All those in favor of article twenty-one, it's a majority vote. All those opposed? Declare that article twenty-one passes. Article twenty-two. The Board of Public Works moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing the aeration blowers and associated sludge handling equipment at the wastewater treatment facility, and to meet this appropriation, transfer said sum from wastewater retained earnings, said funds to be expended under the direction of the superintendent of public works and the general supervision of the Board of Public Works. Go ahead.
So for this, we have some equipment at the current wastewater treatment facility that is very old. It has been there since the original construction of the facility, so what we're doing is we're looking to replace the old equipment.
Okay. Mr. DeCristofaro from the advisory board?
Yes, Ken said it's thirty-year-old equipment. As equipment gets to that age, maintenance becomes more expensive. Spare parts in general for new equipment have gone up almost fifty to sixty percent over the last few years. Spare parts for thirty-year-old equipment are even tough to, very tough to even get anymore. So that being said, advisory board approve this expenditure unanimously.
Okay. It's going to be a majority vote. Discussion from the floor. Mr. Kelly?
No, I think I got my answers right there. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion from the floor? Please get up to the microphone.
Martin Clary, thirty-eight Ellis Avenue, Rexham. This, the aeration blowers and associated sludge handling, this is only a little small cog in the world that's going to be coming into effect as we roll over in the transfer pump area. This is money, ladies and gentlemen, that is well spent to get everything done as fast as possible and make a pathway to expend the volume that's going through and the further volume that is voted down the line. I recommend this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. Again, this is a majority vote. I'll wait for Mr. Clary to get back to a seat. And there we go. All those in favor of article twenty-two, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that article twenty-two passes. And article twenty-three. The Board of Public Works moves that the town vote to increase the FY twenty-twenty-five solid waste budget appropriation by one hundred thousand dollars from five million eight hundred ten thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars to five million nine hundred and ten thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars to fund additional solid waste curbside collection expenses in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and additional disposal and transportation expenses in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, with said expenses being deferred by solid waste retained earnings, said funds to be expended on the direction of the superintendent of public works and the general supervision of the Board of Public Works.
So this article is directly related to our cost for the collection and the disposal of our recycling and our trash.
Okay. Mr. DeCristofaro?
Good evening again. This is another area where budget is challenged. When budget's set, we don't know the final cost of pickup and disposal. We do know that DPW in our meetings, they track these numbers very accurately every month, so by this time of year, they have a very good feel what it's going to take to finance the rest of the year in these categories. This is always going to, this article comes up every single year, the volume increases. We will continue to have challenges in this area along with many other communities in the country. You know, it was expected that the volume rise during COVID with everybody being home was going to level out or even decrease, but fortunately, everybody had a lot of money after COVID, and we spot a lot of Amazon boxes, so our volume continually increased versus leveled out. This budget was increased by about nine percent for this year, and proposed increase that we're working on is a little higher to thirteen percent. Again, along with all the other budgets, the budgeting cycle has become much more improved, and we're getting our budgets much closer to actual spending forecasts. That being said, advisory board unanimously supports approving this as written.
Okay. Discussion from the floor on article twenty-three? Seeing none, I'll go for a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor of article twenty-three, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that article twenty-three passes. And I think we've gone through all our linked accounts, so. So we're on to article three. I don't have numbers in mind.
Steve, Steve Darcy, Temple Road.
Article three, the Select Board moves that the town vote to amend the Marshfield Town Code, Chapter Two, General Bylaws, Chapter one eighty-eight personnel by adding a new section, one eighty-eight dash twenty-two A, paid parental leave as set forth in Article three of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting warrant, and is being presented by the Select Board, Mr. Darcy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Darcy, Temple Road. Basically, what article three does is it would grant paid parental leave to our bylaw employees. This is something that our union employees already have, and this would be consistent with state law. So again, all this does is just grant paid parental leave to our town bylaw employees.
Okay. Mr. DeCristofaro, you're the hot man today.
Thank you. Not much to add to this. This amendment to the bylaws is to include all employees for parental leave in accordance with state law. Beyond a ten-day period, they can use their accrued vacation and whatnot as pay. The only other area that we discussed in this is sufficient time in this amendment for notice to the town of leave so they can work on a backfilling position as needed, which could happen for this or any other occasion in our organizations. Advisory board agrees to approve this unanimously.
All right, this is going to be a majority vote. Discussion on article three? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor of article three, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that article three passes. We are on to article twenty-four. Article twenty-four. William Chiano moves that the town vote to approve article twenty-four as described in article twenty-four of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting warrant. Mr. Chiano? Hey, Paul?
Bill Chiano, twenty-five Cot Road. So with article twenty-four, right now, it allows only the DPW employees for this article for military leave. What I'm looking forward to do now is to extend that policy to all town employees. We do have military people in the fire department. I know we have a few in the police department. One of them's in the DPW who's now deployed. So I wanted to just take this and bring it to all town employees, so everybody's covered, not just one individual.
Great. Advisory board, Mr. Smith?
Rick Smith, Telegraph Hill Road. As you've heard, this article ensures that all of our service members get the same benefit, and it also ensures that getting called up for military service does not become a financial penalty for our service members and their families. Additional costs that could be realized by the town would be only in the event that a service member is called to duty for an extended period of time, and the town has to hire temporary overtime help to cover that person's duties within the town, which in essence already happens. The article does not pay service members above and beyond what they would have made with the town. It just simply ensures that they don't suffer financial hardship through a pay decrease as a result of serving their country. The advisory board supports this article as written unanimously, encourages the town to vote in its favor.
Great. Discussion from the floor. This is a majority vote. Gentlemen at the front microphone.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator.
Don Gibson, eight fifteen Union Street. Does this apply equally to bylaw employees?
Yes.
Sir?
Town council says yes.
All right, so it's, that's very important, I think, and I'm glad you're doing that as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll go to a vote. Again, a majority vote. All those in favor of article twenty-four? All those opposed? All those opposed? I declare that that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for bringing this up. So, at this point, we've got Article twelve, which is the CPC article. So, there are multiple motions in this because each different project has its own motion under the CPC articles. I'd like to, I'll read each motion as they come through, but for an overview, we'll go to Kevin Cantwell, who's the Chair of the CPC.
Yes, as the administrator says, I'm Kevin Cantwell, Chairman of the CPC. We're pleased to recommend for town meeting approval eight articles tonight. I can speak in generalities of it, but I do have the applicants up here with me to answer specific questions.
Thank you. I think from the Advisory Board's standpoint, do you want to talk about that, about them individually, Brian, or do you want to talk in total to begin with?
Brian Crowley, South River Street. I can talk about them in generalities, and then we can get to specifics of those questions.
Okay, because I'm going to read each motion separately, so if you want, you can give the Advisory Board presentation on all of the CPC articles now, or you can do them individually as I read the motions. Does it make any difference?
No, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, go ahead.
The Advisory Board supports this unanimously, seven-nothing. As far as the projects, they're all well-described. Page thirteen really details all the hard efforts that go into the process. The CPC and the other committee also approved, the Capital Budget Committee approved the articles as part of the process. There's consideration for all the various categories, make sure the spending was done appropriately. There's sufficient funds across all the board of open space, rec, housing, and all the other considerations. The amount that was approved unanimously by the Board for each of the items, including, you know, for the various categories.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do you have a general comment, or am I going to start reading motions?
Just waiting for one of the articles, Mr. Moderator.
Motion one. The Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter forty-four B of the Massachusetts General Laws that the town vote to appropriate the sum of eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to fund safety upgrades to the Daniel Webster Estate as described in Article twelve, item one of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting warrant, and to meet this appropriation, transfer said sum from CPC historic reserve funds, said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and Facilities Director. So, is there anyone to speak on that particular?
Yes, actually, Jim, Fred Russell is here. Items one and two are, so Freddie can come up and speak to specifics.
Mr. Russell, do you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fred Russell, facilities manager and resident ninety-two module street. The first item is the Daniel Webster Estate. We had an architect doing a building survey to get a handle on what the condition of the building is, and it was actually pretty good, but she did come up with some upgrades to the basement lighting. If you go down the stairs, there's uneven surfaces in the ground, some's dirt, some's cobble. The lighting switches are pull strings, so we want to increase the basement lighting. Ventilation's poor down there in the basement. Waterproofing and insulation's an issue. Heat and smoke detection expansion, the whole building is not covered for detection, so we want to do that. Handrails on the front and rear steps are code violation. Roof leaks in the access doors in the barn and laundry building need to be addressed. Attic ventilation, and there's a musty smell in that building, so we want to get some fresh air exchange. Gutters need improvement, and some exterior wood trim needs to be replaced.
Okay. Discussion from the floor on motion one. Rear microphone.
Oh, Nicole Molinari, eighty-one Saginaw. I guess I was wondering, this sum, do you really have to do all of the enhancements?
Mr. Russell?
Well, I did prioritize them, and we're going to start with the upgrades in the basement lighting. That's truly a safety issue in my book. You have the Daniel Webster Estate Fund, Barbara Kearney does an excellent job down there, so we're going to make sure that the basement lighting is good. You go down there, and you have to stand on a chair or get a ladder to pull the string, so that's going to go away. So, I actually listed, and I'm going to take care of one, go to the next, take care of the next, and move forward.
Thank you.
Further discussion on motion one?
Hi, Joe Pasevich, Wilson Road. For the purpose of this particular item and for a couple of the other ones, what's the role of the Capitol Budget Committee?
None. This is not, this doesn't fall into Capitol Budget's auspices.
Because it is CPA?
Because the CPC article. We've never had Capitol opinion on CPC articles.
Could I get an opinion? Is that, is that a part of the statute?
It's because, it's not a Capitol Budget Committee article because it's Community Preservation Committee.
Okay. Well, if that's, okay, thank you.
Okay. Speaking of Article one?
Tina Shea, Cariswell Street. Why do you need lights in the basement?
I couldn't hear what you said.
Why do you need lights in the basement?
There's storage down there. There's mechanical equipment down there, the hot water tanks down there. They have spare, they keep some decorations down there as well.
So, you need light switches instead of a pull chain? Can't you just make this chain, the string longer?
No, when you first walk down the stairs from the kitchen, the light doesn't even work from the stairs, so you have to go down the bottom of the stairs, turn the light on, so it's definitely, it's a code violation.
Is this building rented out? Like, do they, can residents rent this building out?
Just make sure it goes through me when we get into discussion, so. You can answer the question. Is that building rented out, or?
Yes, that building is rented out.
And where do those funds go?
Those funds, well, the, I mean, I'm not on the Daniel Webster Committee folks, but that fund, they have to raise money in their lease for some of the work at the building, so they have to support some of the stuff, so the lease money comes in, it goes to them, goes back to the building.
I'm unclear of what you're saying.
Daniel Webster Trust pays the town rent, and the rent goes into the general fund.
Okay. So, the building, no, what I'm asking is, can private, can you rent this out privately? Like?
Yes, you can rent it out for functions.
Right. So, where does that money go?
To the Daniel Webster Preservation Trust.
Okay, so why can't they pay for their own lights?
It's a town, they rent the building from the town. The town owns the maintenance of the building.
Okay, so perhaps we can raise their rent?
Sure, but it's, this is taking care of a historical town asset, so.
So, is just the electrical, or where is the breakdown? I just feel like eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, I mean, nothing costs that. I mean, I.
Can you, can you give an answer to that one?
I can give an answer to that. The basement lighting, ventilation, waterproofing, insulation is estimated to be about thirty thousand. Heat and smoke detection expanded coverage is estimated to be about fifteen thousand. Handrails on the front and rear steps, including period-specific ballisters, is approximately four and a half thousand. Fixing roof leaks in access doors in the barn and laundry building is estimated to be about fifteen thousand. The attic ventilation is estimated to be six thousand. Introducing fresh air to exchange interior steel air, which is fifteen thousand. Repairing installed gutters and balance bolts estimated to be over five thousand.
And how much do they pay for rent?
I don't know.
Don't know. I don't know that we have that information here. Andy?
You don't know?
Somebody knows. I don't know. I don't know if there's anybody here.
I mean, you keep saying to talk to you, so I'm talking.
But I don't know that, does anybody here have the rent amount? The financial team is saying that they don't have it handy. We can get it for you if you need it.
I mean, don't we all need it?
No. They're saying that the information is not handy.
If these buildings are all rented out, like if they create income, then perhaps we should raise the rent to pay for some of these things.
It's, that's a discussion beyond the scope of this article. This article's talking about making repairs to a building, not what the compensation is from a rental income.
But you're looking for money.
They are.
Right, so you could find money if you raise the rent.
Again, it's, funding it to raise the rent is beyond the scope of this article, so the scope of articles funding this repair work using CPC funds. So, I understand what you're saying, it's just, this isn't, town meeting is not a place where we can decide to raise the rent on the Daniel Webster Estate. Front microphone.
My name is Clary, thirty-eight Ellis Avenue, Marshfield, Rexium District. This historic building had quite an effect on visitation from tour buses and everything coming through here. I believe it's still carrying on. As far as the upkeep of the building itself, the electrical design, old-fashioned ways of lighting, something by a pull chain is out the window. There is such a thing as a power factor to let you know what you need for electrical source in there. As far as the upkeep of the building and everything about it, does anything have to do with the federal funding helping out in this particular district? Is that possible, or has that been expended?
This is all funded from our town money through CPC, this estate.
Okay, so there was a grant before that was for doing over that, you know, the Webster Estate. There was a grant there for it.
I remember vaguely that there was a state historical grant at one point in time for that, but that's going back probably fifteen years or something like that.
Nothing after that?
No. Not that I know of, because basically, all the work, all the major work was done at once, and this is just upkeep. Over the years, things let go, so.
Okay, but if there's any other electrical work to be done, I think you should pull a power factor before you get to that building and make sure you have the ample amount of electricity that's going in there. Otherwise, we're going to be up here voting for extra money coming into the building. Is this visited by tour bus people?
I don't know. Does, Mr. Cantwell, do you know that? Sorry, what was the question?
Is this visited by tour bus people as well?
Oh, yes. I mean, it's open to the public and people to rent, so other people are allowed to come to the facility.
All right, so there's functions and everything going on there too?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, you should pull a power factor on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rear microphone.
Robin Aruca, Planting Field Road. I'm a former board member at the Daniel Webster Estate, and I just want to say that anyone in here would be welcome to go to the estate, and the ladies would love to give you a tour. There are a lot of things that need to be upgraded in that home. It is beautiful. It is a treasure to our town, and I think everything on this list makes absolute sense to me, and I urge you all to vote yes to this.
I'm not a big fan of clapping because it slows us down, so just, we can kind of keep the thing rolling. Seeing no further discussion, I'll go to a vote on motion one. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of motion one of Article twelve, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that motion one passes. Motion two. The Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter forty-four B of the Massachusetts General Laws that the town vote to appropriate the sum of seventy-one thousand six hundred dollars to fund a new roof at the historic Marshfield Hills Fire Station as described in Article twelve, item two of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting warrant, and to meet this appropriation, transfer said sum from CPC historic reserve funds, and said funds being expended on the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Facilities Director. Want to give us a little background?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, once again, Fred Russell, who's our facilities manager, can explain. It's a town-owned building. Freddie can explain a little bit more, he can answer your questions.
Thank you. The Hills Fire Station was called the North School at its current location, two twenty-nine Old Main Street. The North School was built in eighteen thirty-eight as a two-room grammar school. In eighteen eighty-nine, the first Marshall High School classes were added. In eighteen ninety-five, the high school classes moved to the Seth Fentress Building. The North School continued as a grammar school until nineteen fifty-one. In nineteen fifty-four, the fire station from Gaal Hall, one fifty-seven Old Main Street, was relocated to that, to the site, the current site. That was from a Marshfield, a town of villages. This roof is old, the asphalt shingles are brittle, they've exceeded their useful life cycle. We're dealing every high wind event, we're finding shingles in the front apron area in the back playground, and it's time to replace it.
Okay. Discussion from the floor. Seeing none, I'll go for a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of motion two of Article twelve, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare that motion two passes. Motion three. The Community Preservation Committee moves that pursuant to Chapter forty-four B of the Massachusetts General Laws that the town vote to appropriate the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund the preservation of a chimney at the historic Winslow House as described in Article twelve, item three of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting warrant, and to meet this appropriation, transfer said sum from CPC historic reserve funds, and said funds being expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not sure if anyone's here from the Winslow. Is Alan or anyone here too? Alan, come on up. Alan can give you a little bit more information on this. The Winslow House is looking for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. The chimney's in dire need of preservation and rehabilitation to prevent collapse. Alan, you come up front. Of course, right next to me. It's all right. You'll look good on TV.
Alan Bates, five twenty-six Pine Street. I'm the Building and Grounds Manager, also a board member at the historic Winslow House. I am here on behalf of the Winslow House, which is located at the corner of Webster and Caswell Street. Last year, during a renovation and restoration of the fireplace boxes inside, we found the main chimney behind the parlor wall is failing. It contains six fireplaces. There's five that are exposed. When we were doing the restoration work, we found one that was hidden behind a wall. Someone had put a wall up probably around in nineteen twenty. This structure is historically important to the town of Marshfield and Plymouth County due to it being the least altered structure in the county, and it's also on the National Register of Historic Places. Every spring, every third grader in the town of Marshfield comes for an educational tour. It is an important structure, and now we even have other towns coming as well. We also do special events and functions throughout the year like weddings, family gatherings, and educational programs for the Marshfield community. We approached the CPC Committee for assistance in funding this project. We are contributing twenty-five thousand dollars towards the restoration, and we asked for a hundred and fifty from the CPC, for a total of one seventy-five for the total project. The chimney is massive in this house. After much consideration, the CPC Committee approved this article. We are here tonight to ask the citizens of Marshfield also to approve and support this historic structure.
Discussion from the floor.
Steve Lynch, fifty Central Street. So, before I even start, I'm going to say I'm going to vote for this article, but I have some serious reservations about how it's being done. So, first off, I'm going to ask some questions I would know the answer to. The town of Marshall owned the Winslow House?
No.
No. It's owned by private s- society, correct?
Pardon me?
It's owned by a private society, right?
Yes.
A nonprofit, okay. And they make money by renting out the space, correct?
Yes. There's income coming in.
So, a- and I believe it's, it's a historic place that is an asset to the town of Marshfield, and that's why I'm gonna vote for this, but I don't like the way it's done. We're back to the same thing, appropriating money for a job where the person who's gonna get the job knows what money he can charge us. We should have a rigid bidding process for things like this, where the contractor doesn't step in and there's, how many contractors are certified to do a, a historic, um, fireplace? Not many, right? So, they know that they're getting the job. They know we appropriated $150,000. So, they're gonna charge us that no matter what. We need rigid bidding processes. And I, I believe that maybe a better way to do this would be to, um, have them spend the money to repair it from their own funds because they do have like four or 500 grand in their own money, right? Then come to town meeting after they repair it with a rigid bidding process, and then we could repay them back. But in any case, I'm just saying that there's a better way of doing this, I believe, because that's a lot of money for, to be putting out for a fireplace. But I'm gonna vote for it because I think it is an asset to the town. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on Article Three, on motion three. Seeing now, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of motion three, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion three carries. Motion four. The CPC Committee moves pursuant to Chapter 44B of the Massachusetts General Laws, that the Town Vote to Appropriate the Sum of $750,000 to Fund ADA-compliant upgrades at town-owned ballfields, playgrounds, and/or recreation areas as described in Article 12, Item 4 of the April 28th, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant, and to meet this appropriation, transfer the Sum of $197,302.96 from CPC Open Space Recreation Reserve Fund and the Sum of $552,697.34 from the CPC Undesignated Reserve Fund. Said funds being expended on the direction of the Board of Public Works and the General Supervision of the Board of Public Works, the Superintendent of Schools, and the General Superintendent of the School Committee, the Select Board, and the Recreation Department. A lot of people got their fingers on this one. Mr. Cantwell, can you give us a background?
Um, yes, sir. As, uh, many folks know, there was a study done by a, a, a group, and they found there were a lot of deficiencies in the playgrounds in the town. Um, this is, this money is going forward to try to address some of the concerns. Uh, the, this money will be used for, at five schools to replace the wood chip cover. The elementary schools were poured in place rubberized flooring, foul zone surface to comply with new ADA requirements. I know, um, Sean Patterson is not here. I believe Ken Ryan can come up and speak a little bit, uh, if there are specific questions on this. Um, the CPC did, uh, meet, obviously, just so folks know, we meet with all the applicants, um, multiple times from September through December or January. Uh, we vet out the proposals. If there's questions, they come back, uh, and answer some, some of them may be straightforward. Some of the proposals here will take a little bit more work to do. Uh, but we do meet with all, we meet, uh, the first Wednesday of every month if anyone's interested in coming to the meetings, or if you have questions after the meeting, reach out to me. Uh, Ken, are you around?
I don't have any information on this.
All right. Well, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll answer what I can.
Okay. Discussion from the floor.
Tom Whelan, Old Main Street. Kevin, at ADA, how long is it gonna take to make these upgrades? Do you have, do you have a timetable for them? Is it gonna take six months, three months, or a year or two?
I mean, Tom, I, I believe that the plan is to get these done within the year. Um, this, this part of it is within the year. Um, they're gonna prioritize the schools, obviously. Um, they, they did have, if people wanted, I know the, uh, survey was done on Town Hall, the, the, the thing they, they wrote up, so folks can look at that. On the DPW, I have full faith in the, in Sean and his staff and the, uh, DPW will manage this well and take care of it as soon as they can.
Is it gonna go out to public bid or is it gonna be done in the town?
Yeah. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for the DPW, but that's, I'm sure they will, they will have meetings on it. They'll meet with folks and reach out with the, the schools and, and the, uh, the PTOs and stuff and work with them and get it done.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
Eric Kelly, Peterson Path. Uh, I'm all for getting the playgrounds, uh, taken care of regards to meet the ADA requirements, but I do have, uh, concerns with making all the playgrounds poured in place. Um, I, I, and I've talked to quite a few people, um, do prefer the, uh, playground mulch that is in place. Um, so I'd like to see if we can meet somewhere in the middle in regards to this. So, there's a whole bunch of people involved in this. So, I'd like to know how this process is gonna go in regards to the Community Preservation Committee, Department of Public Works, the Select Board, School Department, Recreation Department to get together and discuss this, um, as a group before we go forward with it. Can anybody answer that?
Um, Jim, can I allow the, the building?
Yep. Andrew Stewart, uh, Building Commissioner.
Andrew Stewart, Building Commissioner, Highland Street. So, the DPW did a, a survey on the safety aspect of the playgrounds. I then got a request for enforcement from some concerned mothers in Marshfield. They have children who attend schools that cannot use the playgrounds. Okay? Uh, it's a very serious issue for some of the mothers and their, um, or the parents and their children in this town, that they cannot even play with their friends on these playgrounds. And this is starting at the Guarantino Early Education Center. We have somebody there who has cerebral palsy and can't go out on the mulch. It's not just about wheeling something through the mulch. The, they have physical disabilities that prevent them from walking on the mulch. You are required under the ABA or ADA and the AAB, which is Massachusetts Accessibility Standards, to have a flat surface, a smooth walking surface on any of these things so that people can access any aspect of any playground equipment, just to even get over there and be with their friends while their friends play on a piece of equipment that they may not be able to actually use, but they can be there next to their friends. So, that's the intent of doing this. So, I was asked to, with a request for enforcement, to address this. I am responsible for the enforcement of 521 CMR, which is the AAB, the Accessibility, uh, Access Board for, um, for Massachusetts. I'm responsible for enforcing that. I'm also trained as a Community Access Monitor. So, I did the study. I went around to every single playground in Marshfield, all the schools, all the public facilities, and I identified all of the deficiencies in the accessibility aspects of all these places. So, I have that study available for anybody who wants to see it, and I can tell you right now that wood chips are not accessible. They are not a, an accessible surface for handicap accessibility. So, you have to provide an accessible root. The rest of the playground, you know, the open areas can certainly be mulch and wood chips, but you have to have an accessible root and the surface has to be smooth.
So, all right. So, you're saying a root. Now, you're saying that, at first, you were saying that the whole playground needs to be, uh, poured in place. Now, it's just the root and you can't have wood chip, wood chips in place. So, but getting back to my original question on this, like I said, I have concerns with it. I would like to see if we can meet in the middle, which obviously it sounds like from Andrew that we can, that there are many groups involved in this. So, I would like to have a discussion amongst all these groups to see what the plans are, because not everybody's in favor of poured in place. Okay? So, can anybody answer that question between the Select Board?
Andrew Stewart.
The Community Preservation Committee, Department of Public Works, School Department, Recreation Department. We're all, all of us are involved in this. I'd like to have an open discussion with the public in regards to, uh, how we go about this. So, is there a plan in place to do that before we even commence work on this?
Gentlemen, if you have a response?
I mean, I, I would say I'm not gonna speak for other folks, but there are people that, like you mentioned, like five different groups. I'm sure they'll get together. They, they haven't gone out and put up the plan yet. You know, it's not Cowden Stone, so I'm sure they would get together. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not in, in that group. CPC is, is like the gatekeeper. The applicants come in, we bring them to town meeting for their approval. I'm sure Andrew, uh, will meet with all those groups and, and get it done.
Well, let's put it this way. I imagine there's, these, some people here from these groups, uh, would it be out of line, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald to ask them, see if they would be interested in meeting as a group on this?
Pardon me?
I am sure there's at least one or two people from these committees or groups, um, in the, in the, in the auditorium. Um, I would like to see if they would be, uh, interested in making sure that we all meet to discuss before this work goes through.
Yeah. I know that Mr. Patterson from the DPW is not here today. So, I'm, I'm answering, was your point of order?
The, um, the, 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 when we're talking about the, um, in the project column, and this was in the errata sheets, um, this is to appropriate CPC fund reserves for ADA, ADA upgrades to five elementary schools. So, that's specific to where these funds are being used. It's on the five elementary schools.
Right. Just wanna make that note. I didn't make it earlier. Um, rear microphone.
Hi, Julianne Kennedy, 16 Gates Road. Um, I'm one of those concerned moms that wants to have the surfacing change of the playgrounds. I just wanted to encourage you all to think about how it feels to be the kid that can't play with everyone else. They have to sit on the sidelines. They can't have their wheelchair pushed over wood chips because it doesn't move like that. It, it's a heartbreaking thing to see, and the fact that people have the privilege to stand up here and say like, "Oh, we can just push a wheelchair over it. It's not a big deal." They don't know. They haven't had to experience that. So, I just, I really encourage everybody to sit back and think, like, how would you feel if this was your kid or your grandchild that's not able to play with everybody else? So.
Thank you.
Uh, front mic?
That's you, Barry.
Okay. Barry Cornwall, Cornwell Hill. Um, I have some personal experience with the Hatch Mill Group, uh, in applying for a Community Preservation Act back in, uh, 2016 for the amount of $287,000. So, I've been through this process. One of the things that I encourage people to do is, before you come to town meeting and you look at these kinds of articles because they've been in print for almost a month, is you have to look at them, and it requires some homework. And in the case of Community Preservation Act, it's worth everyone's while to read up on what that act is. And then next, read up on the four primary areas for which our property tax can be allocated. Remember, the Community Preservation Act is funded by, uh, additions to our property tax. We agreed to assess 3% for CPC funds. Uh, it's a lot of money. That's how it's being paid for. When you get down to specific subjects, such as what we're having now, these are important considerations. And I encourage someone, especially maybe the CPC Committee, to organize some discussions, to go through the procedures that address these kinds of questions, including bringing those people in. Um, but finally, town meeting, as a previous speaker said, town meeting is for making decisions. It's too late to have discussions on we ought to do this or we ought to do that. I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Barry. Rare, thank you, Barry. Rear microphone.
Mary Widdon, 94 Sheridan Drive. First time I've spoken in town meetings. Anyway, I'm also a member of the Recreation Commission, and years ago I worked in the recreation field, so I'm familiar with this. So, there was a, um, expert coming. We, the town paid for the expert in recreation and playgrounds. She looked at all the playgrounds, wrote a report, and we are in out of compliance in several of them. So, I highly, I very much recommend this important issue. So I highly, I very much recommend this important issue, and I support it. Our children need it, parents need it, the town needs it. Thank you.
Again, if we can hold off on the applause. I'm going to go to the woman at the front microphone, then we're going to go to a vote.
Diane Jordan, Bancroft Street. I just wanted to make clear the gentleman, I can't remember his name, who asked why these expenses aren't covered under the budgets of the various departments, DPW, schools, so forth. The DPW budgets include maintenance for all of these areas, the playgrounds, the fields, but these, like, major improvements can come from CPC, they really can't come from those budgets. So it's just a way that it's done, I guess, is, I don't know if that was really made clear to him, so I wanted to. And off this, I just want to thank the advisory board for doing such an amazing job this town meeting season in their research. That's it, thanks.
Okay, it's a majority vote. I'm going to go vote on motion four of Article 12. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes by majority. We are on to motion five. The Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter 44B of the Massachusetts General Laws of the Town vote to appropriate the sum of $50,590 to fund town-owned recreational trail upgrades, including maps, signage, footbridges, benches, and kiosks at various trail locations described in Article 12, Item 5 of the April 28, 2025 Special Town Meeting warrant, and to meet this appropriation, transfer said sum from CPC undesignated reserve funds, said funds being expended on the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Recreational Trails Committee. Mr. Catwell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As folks, I mean, there's probably many folks in here that use the trails on Marshfield. I think the trails group does a great job. These will be, like Jim said, maps, signage, footbridge, benches. Ned Bangs is here, if folks have particular questions, Ned's been, I think, the chair for many years. Ned, you only have five minutes on, Ned, so get up here.
Can we do the slide show? Yes, we can.
He didn't even need it, I think they had it.
Hi, Ned Bangs, 210 Woodland Circle, Marshfield, current Chair of the Recreation Trails Committee. The slide show that you'll see as it goes by depicts a typical Tuesday. We have our volunteers on Tuesdays, and we hit a different trail each week. We also work with the high school building construction class, so you'll see some picnic benches, some wooden kiosks out there, as well as very successful trail benches. The high school students under the direction of Tom Grillen, it's been a really nice partnership with them. And be happy to-
Did you go through the slides? Yeah?
So there's some slides there, we have about 15 of them, and if anyone has any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Again, this is going to be a majority vote, discussion from the floor. Seeing that, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor of Article 5, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article 5 passes. Article 6, the Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter 44B of the Mass General Laws that the Town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,270,000 to fund capital improvements in Marshfield High School baseball and softball fields as described in Article 12, Item 6 of the April 28, 2025 Special Town Meeting warrant, and to meet this appropriation, transfer said sum from CPC undesignated reserve funds and said funds being expended on the direction of the Community Preservation Committee, Department of, the Superintendent of Public Works, and the General Supervision of the Board of Public Works, and the MHS Ball Field Revitalization Committee. Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Jim said, the CPC is recommending for town meeting approval, $1.27 million to fund capital improvements. Capital, I mean, I know Diane was here, these are capital improvements that are outside other budgets. CPC, there are allowable uses, I mean, and I think there's, they're all, all the projects that come in front of us, like I said, we vet them out. This one, we met with these folks probably six or seven times, phone calls, they did a great job. I'm going to let Rachel go through, and she can go through the specifics. If there's questions, CPC asks me, questions on the product, ask Rachel.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Rach Altibello, 193 Bowles Road. I am the President of MHS Ball Field Revitalization, which is a nonprofit that we formed, a group of parents, player parents really, and Marshfield residents, to address some of the conditions that were at the ball fields at Marshfield High School. The Marshfield High School fields include both the baseball fields and the softball fields, it's four fields in total. Really, what our focus on was that this complex was to look at the accessibility, the functionality or the playability of these fields, and the safety of these fields. So all the ideas that we brought forward in this project address those areas. Really, we've worked hand in hand with the CPC, Town in Marshfield, the Town Hall, the Rec Department, Department of Public Works, and then all the schools, whether it was Marshfield High School, Martinson, or Furnace Brook, who really collaborated together to look at this area and see what was best so that we can make it more functional. So some of the main improvements that are tied to the cost are looking at drainage being installed at the varsity baseball field, proper backstop that has the right height and width to protect the area, the space, cars going by. Also, looking at the accessibility of that field, there needs to be more accessibility to the seats and to the field. And then JV softball needs new dugouts, actually, not new dugouts, they need dugouts because they don't have dugouts. And then there's also batting cages that are needed to protect the players as they warm up, pitchers as they warm up. Varsity baseball has it now, but it's in an area that needs to be addressed, so we're putting a new batting cage in there, and then varsity softball will get one as well. Varsity softball has a bit of an extended outfield, so we're bringing that fence in to meet more of the game regulations. And then all of these infield's will be scraped and rebuilt. They've been in play for over 10 years, they're grass fields, they need attention, they need grooming, they need shape, so all of that will be addressed in this project for all four fields. We will bring in new mix into the baselines that will be safe, permeable, and aid to the function of these fields. So I want to thank everyone that's been part of this, it's been great. You know, we can look past, we've been living with these fields for a long time, but we really want to look forward, we really would appreciate your favor in this vote.
All right, I'm jumping in for Mr. Fitzgerald. Speaker at the first microphone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, I think.
temporary.
Sean Costello, Winslow Street, I'm also the Chair of the School Committee. As the member of the Board of Public Works explained earlier, the school does not oversee the funding or maintenance of ball fields or playgrounds, that is, the DPW. But that being said, the School Committee did feel it was important to take a vote, to send a letter of support for this project, which we did vote for unanimously. I wanted folks to know that the School Committee is in full support of this project, it's very good for our students, and we want to say thank you to Ms. Altibello and everybody who volunteered to make this a reality. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ken, please. Mr. Lynch.
Steve Lynch, 50 Central Street. So, a CPC article that I can enthusiastically endorse, that I'm going to vote for. However, again, I have some, some things I'd like to say about it. The prior speaker about the money coming from a different location, okay, so it doesn't come from maintenance, because it's not maintenance, it's a capital expenditure, but there are other places that it probably should come from instead, like, you know, capital budget or whatever. But anyway, I'm going to vote for it, it's, we have $7 million sitting in this CPC account doing nothing, tax dollars, this is a great article. The reason I believe it's a great article is because, one, I am a huge baseball fan, and secondly, our kids stay at home with their phones and their computers in their rooms, anything to change their lifestyle, to get them out active, playing baseball, team sports, everything about it is great. So I am completely in favor of this. But I do have a couple of reservations about the length, the scope of the article, and Kevin knows I've talked to him, so it's too late now, but I would hope that the proposers of this article will come back next year with a proposal for lights. You know, we should make it so these fields can be utilized to the full extent, and putting lights on them is what is needed, so you can use them at night also, especially in the summer, when it's really hot, and then if you have more than, a different set of groups of teams that want to play, they can be scheduled during the day and then at night also. And there's $7 million sitting in this account that we have been charged extra on our taxes. Get the money now while you can to do this, because next year, I think this, this fund is something that we can allow the taxpayers of Marshfield to finally get a tax break, because municipal government is becoming unsustainable. I think we should move to three, from 3% to 1%. And I believe that we have so much more money coming in that we have plenty to do what we need to do with this money. So I'm going to vote for this, I'm all for it, come back next year, I'm going to vote for lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please, rear microphone.
My name is Lou Maloney, Quail Run. I just want to talk about baseball in the Northeast, how hard it is to begin with. You know, the spring season starts March 17th, and the gym you're in right now is where tryouts are held, because the fields are unplayable. I can speak to the baseball fields, this is the net that everybody hits in, and because you're indoors, you can't even use baseballs. You have to use foam baseballs to play catch. And that's because those fields are unplayable. Quite frankly, they're a mess. It's hard to play in the spring when there is rain. It's even harder when it rains over the weekend and you can't step on the field until Wednesday. That's the way it is. The JV baseball field team just played their third game of the season. Most teams have played 13 in this area. The varsity team has already had three or four games canceled at home. The freshman team's played a handful, maybe five. There is no spring season here, and it's hard enough as it is to have a field that has no drainage whatsoever. And that's why this, this article, I obviously support it, because I want to see these kids out in that field playing baseball. I'm obviously very biased, but I do think it's the greatest game in the world, and the life lessons you learn in this thing cannot be replaced. Showing up every day, having bad days, having good days, and having to show up the next day and do it all over again. That's not just baseball, that is life. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
Eric Kelly, Peterson Path. So I remember Rachel in the group coming before the Select Board to support this, and I met quite a few of them a couple of days later afterwards to get, at the ball fields, to get an idea what they're talking about, and I do fully support this. I know there's one thing I mentioned to the group was that I do support it, but I would like to know that we're going to have a solid drainage plan in place, because I don't want to revisit this, nor, I believe the taxpayers should revisit this in five years. So do you have a drainage place and plan for the fields?
Yeah, one thing I didn't mention, which I should have, is that our committee has been actively campaigning, fundraising, and pursuing grants, and with that money, we've been able to hire a professional sports firm that specializes in design and construction, architectural design and construction. They are here tonight if we need any technical questions answered, I don't want to muddy the floor, but we do have, I had slides, but there was a slide that did pertain to the drainage, the drainage for the varsity field, knowing it's below grade, there is drainage that's going in the infield and the outfield, I think we're doing it at every 15 feet, so there's going to be drainage and then that runs off. So we've, we've already done civil surveys on the land, we've already designed up a plan, and it has a huge attention towards drainage.
Okay, I mean, I wish I was a prize of this prior to the meeting.
It's been at every meeting.
It's, so, could we get a rundown in regards to the drainage, so I get an idea of what it is right now?
Is that, is that the answer you've been having?
No, 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 what the plans are, you said, you said you had some engineers here.
I don't know if there's a slide too, there you go. It shows you the kind of drainage we're putting in.
Did you have somebody here to explain it?
I don't know, Mark Novak? I brought the expert.
Permission to speak?
Sure.
Give me a name, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Mark Novak with Activitas, I'm the Design Principal that has been retained by the Marshfield High School Ball Fields Revitalization, Inc. The drainage design for the field is going to be multi-layered. Right now, we're seeing the largest drainage issue in the infield and the foul territory in between the team areas and the infield. So what we're going, we're proposing to do in the design documents that are still fluid right now, we're developing them before we put them out to public bid. But what we'll be doing is going through a process where we coral off or strip off the sod layer, and then we'll install drainage trenches every 15 feet on center with a 2mm, excuse me, a 50 millimeter, which is a two-inch perforated pipe in a stone drench that's sand-based on top, so provides a lot of infiltration, vertical infiltration down through the system into the drainage basin below. All those pipes will be tied into a perimeter drain that then daylights out of the system. In the outfield, because we have a good pitch on the outfield, we'll go through the same process, but the space in between our lateral trenches will be increased from 15 feet to 25 feet in the outfield. But again, all the drainage trenches will be perpendicular to the pitch of the field to collect water as it runs along the surface, and those pipes will then connect into a perimeter drain that then gets daylighted out.
Okay, so in regards to the perimeter drainage, where is it going to get daylighted out?
We're still working on that, we have plans with our civil engineers to coordinate with DPW, but right now, there's water quality basins beyond the outfield of center field and right field, so right now, that's where we're looking at daylighting to.
Okay. I'd also like to comment on Mr. Lynch's comments in regards to the lighting aspect of it. And I don't know, I'm sure it's all going to go down to what you possibly have left over money, but I would say if you're going to have all this equipment there, Rachel, that, hey, if at least, if you can get something trenched and some kind of pipe in there, just to, just to at least get it in place, then at least that way we can plan forward going forward for the-
It's included, that's included in the project, included in the project is going to be running conduit for future lights. So it'll be there for a quick connect when they're ready.
Okay, I appreciate, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we'll go for a vote on Article 6. Again, majority vote, all those in favor of Motion 6, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article 6 passes. See, good job, Ken. I'll clarify to that, say, "Motion 6 of Article 12," just to make sure it's clear. So we're on Motion 7. The Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter 44B of the Mass General Law that the Town vote to appropriate the sum of $350,000 to fund a contingency fund for capital improvements at Veterans Park as described in Article 12, Item 7 of the April 28, 2025 Special Town Meeting warrant, and to meet this appropriation, transfer said sum from CPC undesignated reserve funds and said sums being expended on the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Conservation Commission. Mr. Catwell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Mr. Moderator said, the Town, we're looking for $350,000, we're recommending the Town meeting, these are costs for contingency, as many folks have seen in the center of Town, the Veterans Parks are undergoing a great makeover right now, and this fundings will be used for changes in unforeseen conditions. They had anticipated getting a grant from the state, the state didn't get the grant, so the Town won't be funding any of these changes. And Bill Finn's here to answer specific questions.
Good evening, my name is William Finn, 96 Dog Lane, and I am the Conservation Commission Project Manager on the Veterans Park South River Dam Removal Project that you see on the screen. The next, the next slide shows the project is currently financed by grant and town funds in the amount of $1,911,000. At the time the contract award, at the time of the contract award, the total project cost for construction, including engineering and consulting fees, was $1,896,735. This amount left a $14,000 contingency for construction change orders or additional services during construction. Last August of last year, the state denied the Town a grant request of $650,000, which included a project contingency of- included a project contingency of approximately 20%, which would have covered issues like the following. The next slide shows the constructed river bypass channel change order, which was necessary to facilitate fish migration upstream while project construction proceeded in the dry restored riverbed. Another change order is depicted on the next slide. The willow tree on the north bank of the river collapsed into the channel, and it had to be removed before other activities could proceed. The next slide shows two examples of change orders. Depicted on the left is a subsurface concrete foundation which was encountered during construction of the bypass channel and had to be removed. The right side, the right side shows the wall and floor of the Water Wheels Slusway Channel, which were, which are both in need of repair and or replacement. Commonly approved change orders equal approximately $69,000, and we anticipate additional change orders, but we do not know what or when they will amount to and when they will occur. This $350,000 contingency fund request will only be used as needed, and any unused funds will will remain with CPC. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion from the floor, rear microphone.
Hello? Joe Passiverich, when you say the, Mr. Moderator, when they say that the remaining funds unused will remain with the CPC, can I get some clarification on that? Will they, will they then be available for use?
Yeah, for all CPC projects, all right, if if use of the ball field at 1.27 million dollars, if it comes in under at 1.2, any funds that CPC recommends approval that are approved by town meeting, if they're not used by the applicant for the project, they come back to CPC.
Do they go back to CPC or do they go back to a designated portion of that?
It depends with the fund. It comes back to CPC. If the funding's from open space, the money goes back to open space. If it's historical, it goes back to historical. It goes into the bucket it comes out of.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, again, a majority vote on Motion Seven of Article 12. All those in favor of Motion Seven, please raise your hand. All those opposed, declare that Motion Seven passes. We're onto Motion Eight. Motion Eight. The Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter 44B of the Mass General Law that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000 to fund improvements at town-owned ball fields, including field reconstruction, fencing, screening, picnic tables, and shade as described in Article 12, Item 8 of the April 28, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant, and to meet this appropriation, transfer said sum from CPC undesignated reserve funds and said sums being expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Superintendent of Public Works and General Supervision of the Board of Public Works. Mr. Cantwell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Mr. Jim said, we're asking the CPC is recommending a town meeting, 100,000 from CPA undesignated funds for town ball field upgrades. These would be done for capital field reconstruction, which they're talking about somewhere at the high school fields. These would be used for other fields to upgrade them. Fencing and screening, there's some fencing and screening needed along the high school, along Forest Street. Folks know that fencing there, balls going underneath, looking at some safety concerns there. Rockwood Road has some tower, I believe, and there's other fencing throughout the town on the ball fields. Also, there'll be picnic tables up at the Marshfield Playground. Be some picnic tables added and shade structures throughout the town as well.
Okay. Discussion from the floor, seeing none. Again, a majority vote. All those in favor of Motion Eight of Article 12, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that our Motion Eight passes, and I believe that means that Article 12 passed completely.
Thank you, sir.
And that's our last article in the special, right? We're onto Article One. The Select Board moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $15,820.53 to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal years as set forth in the chart under Article One of the April 28, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $15,468.3 from free cash, the sum of $56.40 from wastewater retained earnings, the sum of $158.63 from water retained earnings, and $137.47 from solid waste retained earnings. And this is being presented by the Select Board. Mr. Darcy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Darcy, Temple Road. This is an article we see every single year at town meeting, and basically what it does is it pays invoices that arrived after the fiscal year closed. Thank you.
As such, this is going to be a nine tenths vote because it's being previous year articles. From the Advisory Board, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory Board has reviewed these outstanding bills with the town, which were identified after the closing of the prior fiscal year books. There are substantially less of these in this meeting due to continued improvements in the accounting system. These bills are for services already rendered and as approved in prior year budgets. They are not for services to be rendered, but again, rather for services already rendered. The Advisory Board will continue to work with the town to ensure that these situations are rare, but nonetheless does unanimously recommend that we pay our bills and approve this article.
Okay. Discussion from the floor, seeing none, I'll go for vote. Again, this is a nine tenths vote. All those in favor of Article One, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that passes by nine tenths. We're on Article Four. Article Four. The Select Board moves that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 3D, allowing the town to design and designate a place on its municipal tax bills or motor vehicle excise tax bills, or to mail with such tax bills a separate form whereby the taxpayers of the town may voluntarily check off, donate, and or pledge an amount not less than $1, or such other designated amounts which shall increase the amount due, and further to authorize the establishment of Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund for the purpose of defraying the real estate taxes of elderly and disabled persons of low income, and further that there be established a taxation aid committee consisting of the Chair of the Board of Assessors, the Town Treasurer Collector, and three residents of the town appointed by the Select Board for staggered terms of up to three years, fixed, to identify the recipients of such aid and make rules and regulations necessary to carry out the provisions of said law. Submitted by the Select Board. Mr. Darcy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Darcy, Temple Road. Article Four would create an entirely voluntary process for folks to checks, check a box on their tax bills from the town and elect to make a donation to a tax aid fund to defray property taxes for low-income elderly and disabled residents in the town of Marshfield. So again, it's entirely voluntary. You don't have to do it. Nothing changes for you if you don't check the box and elect a specific amount to make as a donation to the fund. We all know that the property values in Marshfield have skyrocketed over the last five years, and there's never been a more stressful time to be on a fixed income than right now. And the committee that would decide who was eligible and who they would disperse funds to to help with property tax relief would be composed of the Board of Assessors. I used to be on the Board of Assessors, and we would receive on the regular requests and applications for relief from low-income elderly and disabled residents, and they would probably know better than anyone in our town who would qualify and who would be a great candidate and a good fit for this. We would also have our Town Treasurer Collector, and we would also have on the committee three residents of our town that would be selected by the Select Board. So I think it would be good to have people who represent our community to serve on this committee. So again, all it does is reduce the number of steps that someone has to take to make a donation to assess our disabled and elderly low-income residents in our community, the most vulnerable people in our population. So I don't see any downside to this article. There's only upside. Again, it's a totally voluntary process. If you check the box, just choose the amount that you want to donate. And I think it's a good thing for our town. There are almost 30 other communities in Massachusetts that have a tax aid committee, and if Marshfield joins, we'd round it out to 30. I think it's a great idea. We're catching up to some towns that are already doing a great thing, and I think it's an important thing to help out the most vulnerable people in our community. And what's really important, I think, as well, is that we'd appoint some great folk to decide who would be eligible. And anytime you can reduce the number of steps someone has to take to make a donation, the more donations that you'll get. So if you can reduce the barriers to entry, you're going to definitely tick up the donations a lot more. And again, it's voluntary. You don't have to do it. And again, people who want to make a donation would be helping out some of the most vulnerable people in our population who desperately need assistance. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Crowley from the Advisory Board.
Brian Crowley, South River. While there are many good aspects to the law that allows for these benefits, there's two reasons that we're opposing this article. We unanimously opposed it eight nothing. There's currently other mechanisms in place to address these aspects, and it's also not clear as to the costs and additional effort and time related to these components, and those may not outweigh the benefits of this provision.
Discussion from the floor, rear microphone.
Susan Wolf, 375 Union Street.
Can't, you're going to speak in the microphone, please.
Susan Wolf, 375 Union Street. I'd like to urge everybody to vote for this. It's a very compassionate article. It it is a very small amount, easy check the box, and please vote compassionately and approve this.
Okay, thank you. Senate.
Amory Senate, Senate Slane, also Principal Assessor for the town. Does this article only relate to real estate tax bills, or would we be able to do excise?
It would.
Any, any tax bill.
Any tax bill, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, this is a majority vote. All in favor of Article Four, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article Four passes with a majority. We are on to Article Seven, which is the last article in the special. The Select Board moves that the town vote to rescind the prior authorization from the October 16, 2023 Special Town Meeting Article Eight by striking out Item 22 labeled Complete Streets, Brand Rock Esplanade Traffic and Improvement Project Phase One for $250,000. And this is being spoken to by Mr. Strobel or Mr. Moran?
So Sean Strobel, Town Treasurer. Back in October 16, 2023, during the Special Town Meeting, in Article Eight, which is the free cash article, item number 22 is 250,000 for complete streets. Due to the fact that the free cash had not been certified here for the town, the town elected and the motion was made to actually take it from stabilization. In the same meeting, the same Special Town Meeting, Article 11 was also voted and was referenced, 250,000 for the same project coming from free cash, when in fact the motion was for 250,000 to be taken from stabilization. In April of 2024, we made the necessary correction to restore the stabilization fund with free cash. However, because of the duplication, we now have $250,000 from stabilization that needs to be moved back to stabilization that is now tied to this project.
Advisory Board, Mr. Smith.
The Advisory Board does unanimously recommend passage of this article. As Mr. Strobel explained, this article corrects a mistake that erroneously provided funding for the same item twice. One thing we were impressed by is that the checks and balances of the existing system did catch this. It did flag it for removal, and of course, we recommend that it does get removed so it doesn't tie up additional funding. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor, rear mic.
Barry Cornwall, Cornwall Hill. This is probably the fourth or fifth time we have heard it mentioned that there was an error in the accounting process of the transfer in fund. And I, for one, find this totally unacceptable. And I, for a start, I insist that the Select Board, not the Board of Selectment anymore, the Select Board, address this issue in a public forum and identify the specific problems that took place. Why did those mistakes happen? And come up with a plan to ensure they will not not ever happen again. Going along with this, I have to point out that we've had major turnovers in our financial team, Treasurer Collector, and the Town Accountant. We're now, I believe, on our fourth set in the last seven or eight years. That, too, is a warning sign. Please, Select Board, take leadership and solve this problem.
Okay. Again, please. Rear mic.
Steve Lynch, 50 Central Street. So that means after all the budget has been figured, oh, we don't know what the budget is, that's right. This $250,000 extra that we can now add to the $710,000 that we owe South Shore Votech?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this was a double billing, and it was.
But the cash is sitting somewhere in the bank, correct?
But it was, it was returning money to stabilization that was double appropriated.
But it was accounted for in the last budget so that it was set aside. So is that money sitting there in the bank account somewhere, or is this just a make-believe number on the screen?
So this is money that is sitting from the stabilization fund. This is not extra money or found money. In this case, it's 250,000 that was taken from stabilization. During town meeting, the townsfolk voted on both articles. This is, this is a motion to restore, to return that 250,000 back to the stabilization fund.
So that money is on the balance sheet, but it's not figured into the budget that you all screwed up and that we can't vote on tonight? So but so then you're going to add that $250,000 to extra money we have. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. The 250,000 is not part of the general operating budget.
Okay, all right, I get, I understand. So it's just a number on the screen. And I just want to say one more thing. This is not the place to have a town meeting. This makes it really hard. We should be having a town meeting over there. If you have overflow, they come over here. The seating arrangement is terrible. They have to get up and talk at the microphone. You have to look up over people's heads instead of sitting up at an angle, and it's hot enough doing town meeting as it is without having to be in this room. Thank you.
Martin Clary, 38 Ellis Avenue, Rexham, Marshfield. Is there any chance, gentlemen, that you can move this Article Seven into your June meeting coming up, that we can discuss this further on this particular article?
It's, if you wanted to discuss the article, we could do it now. We didn't include it in the June meeting because it's not part of the operating budget.
So there's, there's so much discussion on this, where you had the money and then it, something happened, it wasn't accounted for, and now it's back in tonight to revote it again.
We're putting it back into stabilization. To be clear about what's happening, the money was appropriated twice. They only needed it once, so that money needs to be put back into stabilization.
So there's no way that you could discuss this any further on a June meeting? Is that correct?
No, there's nothing to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article Seven passes. So this is your, bear with me here for a moment. So what we need to do, our last operational business for the Special Town Meeting is to recess the town meeting so we can discuss the financial articles in June. And so that motion is, I move that the Special Town Meeting be recessed until Monday, June 2, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Marshall High School. Here it says Gymnasium. I agree with Steve. I'd rather be in the auditorium. I'd rather be in the auditorium for further consideration of Special Town Meeting Articles Two and Six. You got a question about this motion?
I do, yes.
Okay.
Steve Lynch, 50th Central Street. So this is my warrant book that I picked up when it came out, right? And you can see all the writing that's on this warrant. I spent, no, not hours, days researching every one of these articles by going to Advisory Board meetings, Selectmen's meetings, watching them on TV, enemy, a lot of my time. So when I get up here, I can ask questions that I already know the answer to, but I want them to know the answer to. But no, you guys screwed the budget up so bad, we have to come back in a month to do this. It's outrageous. Your financial team is a disaster, and it's not fair to taxpayers of Marshfield to have to do this. Thank you.
Okay. So, I moved that, I had moved, as I said in my motion, that we're going to recess the Special Town Meeting until June 2nd. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes. So we are now done with Special Town Meeting. We're doing the annual now. We're not done. Let's be clear, we're going, we are not done. We are only halfway done. Yeah. So we're going to start the annual town meeting now, which, since we took out the financial articles, there's not a whole lot there, but there's a few that we need to talk about. So Article Six on the annual is our first question. Article Six, the Board of Public Works moves that town vote to approve Article Six as set forth in the April 28th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. This is submitted by the Board of Public Works. Who's going to be here to submit for the Board of Public Works? Let's try it.
Ken Ryan, DPW Engineer. So this article is an annual article where we accept the money from Chapter 90 funds so we can continue to do road repairs.
Mr. Crowley from the Advisory Board.
Brian Crowley, South River. The DPW determines the repairs, submits applications not to exceed the $740,000 limit. As noted, it's an annual article. The DOT approves expenses as incurred and then reimburses through Chapter 90 funds not to exceed the $740,623.01 from the state. It was approved unanimously by the Advisory Board, seven-nothing.
Okay. This is going to be a majority vote. Discussion from the floor. Rear microphone.
Thank you, have a question.
Name and address.
Bernie Dupuy, 6 Weathering Lane. The Chapter 90 funds, to my understanding, is from the state to the town. Is that based on a per-mile road surface, or how does that work?
Mr. Ryan, do you know?
Yes, I believe that is based on a road miles.
Okay. The reason why I ask that, there have been several communities that have asked to have their roads accepted by the town, and therefore, more money would be brought to the town by Chapter 70 funds, am I correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell me why that's been put off and delayed and delayed and delayed?
No, I'm not aware. I'm not in that process. But I do know that the amount of money that's awarded on a per-mile base, basis, is not enough to maintain all the roads.
That, that's my whole point. If more streets were accepted, more money would be coming into the town, and those streets that are accepted typically are in very good shape, otherwise they wouldn't be, could be used to repair some of the roads that are not in great shape.
That is part of that process.
I have a difficult, a difficult time understanding why we're turning down money from the state for roads that are perfectly acceptable and could be used for other roads as opposed to, you know, not accepting them and not getting the money. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
We're going to have Town Administrator address this.
Hi, Peter Moran, interim Town Administrator. You raise a good point, but it's a dual-edged sword. The problem, what you get with additional miles is additional Chapter 90 money. But once you accept that road, you accept it in the condition that it's currently in. So if the road bond, when the original development went in, is expired and was not put in, the road wasn't put in to the specifications that you would want today, you're going to inherit, you know, costs that you may not want to inherit. So the better, the better way to approach this is to do an assessment of your current road conditions, look at them, see which ones are ready to go for acceptance, get them into the queue so that you get the Chapter 90 dollars, and stay away from the ones that are going to cost more than you will get from Chapter 90. So it, it is the right idea to make sure you're up to date on your Chapter 90 road miles, but you want to make sure that you're, you're not inheriting costs that you don't want to inherit. Thank you.
I, I agree with that, but I'm, what I'm saying is there are a number of streets that do meet those requirements now and had five years ago or so when developments went in. I think we're passing up money that could easily be coming into the town for good use. That's my whole point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrier.
Dave Carrier, 34 Outlook Road. One of the things, the statistics back in 2023, and I'm sure they have not improved over the last two years, is that the funding coming from the state based on the accepted roadway miles actually amounts to the, about enough to completely rebuild a quarter of a mile for each mile of dollars you're getting with the cost for redoing sections of roads. And that has been part of the reason that, you know, some of the acceptance of completed roadways was not completed by Public Works back in the time.
Mr. Shoddysey.
Bob Shoddysey, Board of Public Works. The formula is not just based on road miles, it's also based on population, employment. There's a, there's a whole list of, that go into the formula. The Board of Public Works has been dealing with this since 2000, since I've been on the boards since 2002. And we just voted to create a pathway to accept roads that will not cost us a lot of money moving forward. We've been working with town council and others to come up with the same processes that other towns have done. And we do have a pathway to accept new roads, but we don't want to accept the liability along with it. It doesn't make sense to us to accept a road that needs a million and a half dollars worth of work, we're only getting half of it, and it's not even a feeder road or a major root road. So we're going to be working with the Select Board, our board, town council, and others to create a pathway to accept roads that are in very good shape and are brand-new, which have a life expectancy of 20, 20 years out. We just don't want, want the liability to have to improve roads that don't have any, any useful life to them. Thank you.
Mr. Cornwall.
Barry Cornwall, Cornwall Hill. I wish I had the, the data right in front of me, but over the years, I have noticed a number of unaccepted roads whose conditions are deteriorating. And when I looked into it further, one of the things I discovered in speaking with the residents of those roads is that they're, well, we were approved by town meeting, accepted as a public road, but the single biggest problem was that the town failed to record those accepted roads with a registry of deeds. I don't know whether that is continuing or not. I, I hope it's not. But in the future, I would strongly recommend that when we do receive lists of private roads or ways to be accepted, that we specify what amount of money the town is willing to spend on upgrading those roads, or, contrarily, how much money those residents who are responsible for those private roads need to spend to upgrade the road to town standards. This is not brain science.
Okay. Town Council has a rebuttal on that.
Robert Galvin, Town Council. So I began my service in September of 2012, and at that time, the Board of Public Works wasn't accepting roadways, I think for the reasons that Mr. Carrier explained. Four years ago, I was asked by the Planning Board and the Board of Public Works to draft a new policy so that this could, process could begin anew when that policy has been drafted, and I believe the Board of Public Works is prepared to approve that. And once that's done, we'll have a defined process, the forms are all in place, and the town could begin accepting roads.
Seeing no further discussion on Article Six, we'll go to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Six, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article Six passes. We are on to Article Eight, I believe. Article Eight, the Planning Board, Eight and Nine are linked. So the Planning Board moves that the town vote to amend the Marshfield Town Code's Division Three zoning bylaw, Chapter 305 zoning, Article Five use regulations, Section 305-5.04 table of use regulations as set forth in Article Eight of the April 28th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Mr. Guimond from the Planning Board.
Thank you. Greg Guimond, Ice House Lane. Do they have the slides? So we're covering the battery energy storage system, or BES, and the large-scale ground-mounted solar installations. Next slide. Article Eight would replace the table of use wholesale transportation industrial to the current Number 23 battery energy storage system and, with the revised language. This use category is principal use, does not cover individual homes with either solar or wind installations from having residential-scale battery systems. This revision addresses a typo that we had in the Brant Rock Village overlay district from last town meeting, which I did mention at town meeting that I would be back at this town meeting to correct this. It prohibits the use in the Brant Rock Village overlay. Article Nine would replace the table of use for the solar installations. Again, this was a Scribner's error from last town meeting that we said that we would come back and replace this. The Planning Board held its public hearing on March 10th for the zoning articles. The Planning Board, on its March 24th meeting, voted favorable recommendation at the town meeting for Articles Eight and Nine.
Okay, thank you. Sherri Costello from the Advisory Board.
Sherri Costello, Freshbrook Way. The Advisory Board recommends approval of these articles as written. The amendments revise the Scribner's error from the last town meeting in the fall of 2024 and prohibits the use of the battery energy stores, storage systems in the BRVO and the WRPD. These systems are large, they're metal, and they're full of batteries, wires, et cetera. In the event of a fire, it would be hard to put out the fire and could present health, safety, and welfare issues. We currently do not have any best systems in town, and nor are there currently any proposals to do so. Again, we recommend approval of this article. Article Nine also revises the Scribner's error from the fall 2024 meeting and prohibits the large-scale ground-mounted solar panels from being installed in an R3 or the BRVO district. This is an area of small lots, and there is no ability to buffer solar farms from the houses. So solar panels should be, I'm sorry, solar panels should be, should not be in the flood zone, they should be elevated, in an elevated area. The Advisory Boards recommend approval of this article as written.
Okay, thank you. Discussion from the floor. These are both two-thirds vote articles. When we go to vote, rear microphone.
Thank you. Madeline Daly, 5 MacArthur Lane. So I'm going to be voting no on this, because when this was, the battery storage was initially put forth for Brant Rock, we came to town meeting and there was inadequate answers, there wasn't enough information provided, and clearly, by putting forth these two new articles to correct the errors that were presented at the original, original town meeting, means that you didn't have all the information. So we voted on an article that was not presented fully to the people of the town. So I'm going to be voting no, because we're going to need to take this back and have proper information presented to the people in order to be able to vote properly. But giving people inadequate information or saying, I don't have that info, or it's just fire training, when it was asked, how would a fire be handled with this? And now more information's out on these battery storages. They're toxic, people have to, had to be evacuated in the areas, and the fire can burn for days. Not only does the toxicity go into the air while it's burning, but it also leaks into the ground and can go into our water systems. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we'll go for a vote first on Eight, and then we'll go to Nine. So on Article Eight, again, this is two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed, I declare that that passes by two-thirds. So Article Nine, again, it's the same thing. Two-thirds vote, Article Nine. All those in favor, Article Nine. All those opposed, I declare that passes by two-thirds as well. We are on to Article, what? Article One, the Select Board moves that the town vote to approve Article One as set forth in the April 28th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Is anybody presenting from the Select Board? This is, this is, is somebody from the Select Board presenting, or?
Steve. Laurie White.
We lost Mr. Darcy. This is the Town Meeting Report article, so it's acceptance of town meeting reports. Mr. Crowley? Advisory Board opinion? Oh, I'm sorry, I meant the wrong article.
The Advisory Board recommends approval of Article One. This is our, the standard report, annual report, is published annually. Take, encourage everybody to take a look at it. It is published, it's available at Town Hall. I believe that there's some copies out here at the front as you come into the auditorium as well. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Mr. Smith? Discussion from the floor.
Hi, Joe Pasevich, Wilson Road. I'd like to know if the Town Council can chime in on this and tell us if there's a statutory basis for creating and accepting a town report? Is there a statutory requirement?
Traditional, he says.
It's traditional. Okay. Second thing is, who does this? Who puts this together?
From my own personal experience with this, it's usually been the Town Administrator that assembles, and the staff that assemble all the reports that come in from the different departments. And then obviously, there's financial information in the back that comes out of the financial team.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to suggest for future discussion that we designate somebody, somebody that we know, whose name is known to everybody as the central collection person, not just to assume that somebody in Town Hall's going to do it. not just to assume that somebody in Town Hall's going to do it.
I assure you that the report doesn't spring out of the ether. I mean, somebody does do it, and it's the Selectman's Office that puts it together.
Well, it seems to. But I would like to, and I'd be in favor of actually paying somebody to do a decent job. And I just want to bring up one thing. I'm an elected member of the Housing Authority. And if you look at the Housing Authority's report in this document, I just want people to know that that was never run by me as a board member. I did not approve it, even though it says submitted by the Housing Authority members. The second thing I want to say, and it's not something I want, that's debatable. I was, I was never given that. Second thing I want to show is on page twenty, it lists the Housing Authority, and it shows my term expiring in 2027. It's 2028, just, and there's also one member missing. So, year after year, I see a lot of flaws with this, and I just wish somebody would be appointed as the, the point person for this, and if we have to even pay them.
Is that you, is that you volunteering?
Well, give me a couple of grand, I'll do it, sure. Okay? And, and again, the, the last point I want to make, and I know this is educational, I don't want to take up your time. I'd like to see some consistency in the financial reports year to year. We see them changing, you know, as has been pointed out with all the upheaval, turmoil, changes in treasuries, et cetera. Could we get a standard format, please? Thank you.
Okay. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article One, please raise your hand. All those opposed, Article, Article One passes with majority. We're on to Article Ten. Eleven is on deck. Article Ten, this is the CPC, basically the administrative article for CPC where money is put into the different divisions. So, Kevin, you want to kind of set the stage?
Yes. In the CPA legislation, ten percent of the, the set-asides of the CPA revenues from one year have to go into three different parts: historic, open space recreation, and affordable housing. Up to ten percent of the parts, so. Last year was two hundred fifty-two, two million, three hundred fifty-two, three hundred ninety dollars was the total between the tax levy and what the state gave us. So, ten percent was historic. Ten percent goes open space slash recreation. As we said earlier, they're, they're together. Ten percent went into affordable housing, and up to five percent is for administrative costs, which pays for our administrative assistance, studies that we can commission to the town. The town could do studies that we can fund that out of administrative funds as well. So, we're asking for a town meeting's approval.
Okay. Sherry Costello from, oh, I'm sorry, Paul de Cristofaro.
Paul de Cristofaro, George Street. Not too much to add here, other than, you know, setting aside this money qualifies for all the potential granting as well, Kevin, correct? And the, uh, Mr. Conwell kind of stole my comments on this one because I wanted to mention, we, we put three percent into this every year out of our taxes. But this is more of a formality, and again, as Mr. Conwell said, the real work is done in the fall. That three million you just voted on an hour ago is where the work is done, and that's where you really want to be involved if you want to know where this money is spent. Advisory Board unanimously approved this as written.
Okay. So, there are multiple motions here. I'll read each motion, and then we'll see if there's discussion on the floor. If not, we'll go to a vote. These are majority votes. Motion Number One, the Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter Forty-four B of the Mass General Law that the town vote to set aside the sum of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety from the FY 2026 revenue for historic reserves. And discussion on the floor. Seeing that it'll go to a vote, all those in favor of Motion One, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Motion One passes. Motion Two, the Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter Forty-four B of the Mass General Laws that the town vote to set aside the sum of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety dollars from FY 2026 revenue for open space and recreation reserves. Seeing no discussion, again, majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, so I declare that Motion Two passes. Motion Number Three, the Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter Forty-four B of the Mass General Laws that the town vote to set aside the sum of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety dollars from the FY 2026 revenue for affordable housing reserves. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Motion Three passes. And Motion Four, the Community Preservation Committee, Community Preservation Committee moves pursuant to Chapter Forty-four B of the Mass General Laws that the town vote to set aside the sum of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from FY 2026 revenue for administrative and operating expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. Again, seeing no discussion from the floor, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Motion Four passes. Thank you. So, we have completed Article Ten. We're on to Article Eleven, and then our last article will be Article Five. So, Article Eleven, Nicholas Drosopolis moves that the town vote to approve Article Eleven as described in Article Eleven of the April 28, 2025 annual town meeting warrant. And this is a citizen's petition. This is going to be a... This is going to be, I think it may say in your warrant, it's two-thirds, but some more legal information came up. This is going to be a majority vote. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nick Drosopolis, Ames Way. I'd like to make a motion first, Mr. Moderator.
Please do.
I move to amend the motion to delete the proposed reduction in the required parking ratio in the Brant Rock Village Overlay District, so that the only amendment we will be, will be deletion of the last sentence of Section 305-13-05K parking, which currently requires that residential parking in the Brant Rock Village Overlay District be located above base flood elevation.
So, what we're going to do is discuss the amendment, which is eliminating the change, it's the first thing. It's eliminating the change in the number of parking spaces per unit, correct, or per bedroom. You're leaving it the way it originally was written, instead of amending it.
Correct.
That's what you're trying to do. So, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing that, I'll call for a vote on the amendment. That's a majority vote. All those in favor of the amended language, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes. So, now we have an amended article. The only thing we're talking about now is the elevated parking.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Today, we're here because we believe in Brant Rock's future. A future that honors its coastal character, strengthens all businesses, protects our environment, and prepares us for the challenges of tomorrow. Parking is important, but how we design it will shape everything about the experience of living, working, and visiting here. We are proposing a smarter, more resilient path, one that fits naturally into the landscape, improves access, and keeps Brant Rock's unique charm alive. Next slide, please. This is the Brant Rock Overlay District, and it was designed to encourage smart, flood-resilient, mixed-use development that supports local businesses, residents. We have been working to design creative, efficient parking solutions, including building under a lot of FEMA structure which is much needed and requested, requested parking from our town officials. Next slide, please. Our landscape goal is tailored to what our community truly needs. A yes vote to this proposed bylaw change to Article Eleven coincides with a response to the 2021, oh, excuse me, I got ahead of myself. Sorry. One of the primary disadvantages of raised parking and the increased cost of construction, building above grade requires extension, structural support, specialized materials, and design considerations to bear the extra load. The current requirement imposes a disproportionate financial and logistical burden on all mixed-use development, particularly in walkable village such as Brant Rock. Next slide. Next slide, please. For example, if the shops at Brant Rock currently for sale were to rebuild with residential units above them or any other property larger than 10,000 square feet were redeveloped, this regulation would make this project virtually impossible. It would force the construction of elevated parking, which undermines the viability of any new development in Brant Rock. Next slide, please. This is what we do not want. A building, a massive above-ground garage would increase stormwater runoff and create large structures that no longer align with the character of Brant Rock. The risk of constructing such a garage will make it financially and aesthetically, and I repeat, aesthetically irresponsible to the neighborhood. The construction of elevated structures uses more materials like concrete and steel, contributing heavily to a carbon footprint. Who would want to look at a blank concrete structure that discourages foot traffic and damages the very business we seek to support? Next slide. Our landscape goal is tailored to what our community truly needs. A yes vote to a proposed bylaw change to Article Eleven coincides with a response team of the 2021 Rapid Recovery Plan put out by the Baker Administration. Here, noted on this slide, three top priority goals of a public feedback. As you can see, promotes flexible development, expand retail activity, enhance infrastructures. Revitalization needs to be unified solution to improve the integrity of the Overlay District. Next slides. The exist, existing areas lack upgrades and refinement, and there are no adequate amenities to connect visitors to storefronts. Next slide. This community can face real hurdles such as flooding, which impacts the space. Next slide. But our new infrastructure is a forward-thinking solution where we intend to build a vibrant community that is safe, accessible, and inviting. Next slide. And we are committed to developing solutions that are resilient. Next slide. So, we are promoting that grade-level parking is more resilient because it adapts better to coastal conditions like flooding, storm surges, changes in weather patterns. Unlike a massive above-ground garage, which can trap water and suffer serious structural damage during floods, grade-level parking can be designed to drain and recover and reopen more quickly after a storm. Grade-level parking is a simpler and more cost-effective way to build and maintain, make a smarter investment for Brant Rock's future. Grade parking, especially when designed with green infrastructure, has a smaller environmental impact. Street parking gives us smarter, more flexible options so we can balance today's needs without locking ourselves into an outdated model that limits our future. Parking garages are not resilient, and they lack sustainable, sustainability. Almost done. In conclusion. Next slide, please. We are proposing to put the bylaw back to existing language, which makes grade-level parking allowable.
Just a minute. He's about wrapping it up. I get it.
You'll have your time. Thank you.
Wrap, wrap it up.
We envision a boardwalk with walkable storefronts and gathering spaces, spaces, vibrant spaces that naturally draw people in, blending the lively energy of the present with a timeless coastal charm and rich history that define the area of Brant Rock. Grade-level parking, integrated creatively with resilient, walkable design, offers a future where our businesses thrive, our streets stay vibrant, and our town keeps a special coastal charm we all cherish. Next slide, please.
Please, please wrap it up. You're done.
You're done.
Okay.
This is our rendering that we created. We hope everyone, thank you.
This is an important event, needless to say, for the people in Brant Rock. I want to make sure that all the information gets out. You'll have time to respond to it. There you, that's where you're at. So, you're going to go to the first microphone.
All right. I'm going to try to do this within my allotted time, folks. So, what I just want to say today...
Just before you do that, Advisory Board, did you have an opinion on that?
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
Uh, the Advisory Board voted six to two in favor of this article as amended. The majority felt that people live, do business, and build properties, both residential and commercial areas throughout the country that have weather events and other, create other challenges that approach them. Therefore, the board majority found no reason to restrict the petitioners from exploring viable solutions and possibly building parking on land that they own, that is legal, and within our town building codes.
Okay. So, now we'll go to a discussion from the floor.
Thank, thank you. And I'm thankful for all of you here today.
Name and address, name and address first.
Oh, apologies. This is Lucas Fitzpatrick, 15 Blue Heron Way. I just want to say thank you all for letting me speak for a moment. While I do appreciate the words that you guys have delivered tonight, this proposed change is not for the prosperity of Brant Rock. This is for the apartment complex you want to build for your profits. Apartment complexes that will not be affordable to the average young person in Marshfield. I make $62,000 a year. I guarantee I would not be able to afford one of the apartments in this building. This project is massive. The giant parking garage they all use to scare you in their little slideshow, that's what this apartment complex is going to be. It's going to be a massive structure. All right? You guys talk about the future of Brant Rock. I'm looking at the history, the heart and soul of Brant Rock, which is that esplanade. This apartment complex you bring in will change and destroy that. You will bring in many people from outside places. You are going to bring traffic to an already congested area. They just put in that insanely dumb roundabout that is causing so many, five popped tires. There's not been a single one. The 25 years I've lived in this town, I've not seen an accident there. The traffic's going to get even worse in that area in the summer, even worse on the 3rd of July. What do you think's going to happen when we have 87 apartment units? Probably two people to one of those units. We're going to have 160 new people coming in that area every day. Do you honestly say that is for the best of Brant Rock? It is not. It is for the best of your bank accounts for that to happen. That is why I ask my fellow citizens to vote no on this proposed change. Thank you. And I did that within time, I would just like to point out.
Gentlemen, the rear microphone. Gentlemen at the rear microphone. Yep.
Skip Turecki, 177 Ocean Street. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What I'd like to say is that I'm an engineer, and I looked at this from a different perspective. I'm also against this project. This is going to put high demand on all the town resources, and it'll be a major burden on the town in terms of our well water, our sewage, our fire, our police, and our schools. This is going to end up costing everybody in town a lot of money. I spoke with Sean Patterson, Superintendent of the Water Department. I spoke with Clint Stetson, because I'm an engineer, okay? But anyway, this is common sense what I'm talking about. I asked them if Stephen and David had talked to them about any of this project. They haven't spoken to the water or the sewer department. They're going to end up dumping and taking 25,000 gallons a day out of our well water. Okay? That's going to put a tax on all of our pumps. It's going to put a tax on all of our wells, and it's going to increase the sewage. We're at over 50% capacity right now in our sewer system, and they want to dump more into it. They have not done their homework. They should have done an environmental resources impact study. They didn't do that. They should have done a water and sewer impact study. They didn't do that. Stephen and David come before the town, okay? And they're begging us as if it's a hardship for this particular project, but they haven't done their homework. They haven't told us what the impact is going to be and what it's going to cost us. It is definitely going to put a tax on all the well pumps. It's going to definitely put a tax on all the sewer pumps. That's going to cost us money. We need another fire truck if they do this project. They should be paying for that fire truck. We should not be paying for that fire truck. So, what they're doing is, this is a huge smokescreen. They haven't done their homework, and they're practicing on us. They haven't built a project like this before '87. They're trying to be developers. They have no experience. Lastly, they have not told us where the funding is going to come from. We're talking about $50 million for this project, okay? Where is the funding? Have they secured it? If they go bankrupt halfway through it, where is the bonding to protect the town that this project will in fact get finished? I hope everybody votes no, because all this is going to do is tax every resource in town and cost us money. Thank you very much.
Mr. Query?
Martin Query, 3D.
Martin Query, 38 Ellis Avenue, Rexham. And I say Rexham because it's a beautiful, beautiful part of this community. Beaches are beautiful, the water is terrific down there, the walking is fantastic. We have a beautiful, beautiful town here, ladies and gentlemen. Don't destroy it with what you're trying to do. How many units are you going to put in there that you want to do? Let me ask you that.
Mr. Moderator, does that also have the scope of this article here?
I think, I think number of units is within the scope of the article. I mean, you're talking about, you're putting your article through, so you should be able to answer that.
We don't have an exact amount yet of how many apartments that we're going to be putting on there, but I mean, we've, as we did our residential meetings a few weeks ago, we did state that we're approximately 80-plus apartments.
Eighty, you say?
Eighty-plus apartments.
Eighty-plus. Are you ready to foot the bill for a brand-new sewer plant down here to disperse any kind of water control that come out of the next 80? Are you ready to do that?
I think that is beyond the scope of the article, so...
No, it's not. No, it's not.
You can't afford it. You can't afford it, because it costs a small fortune for our new plant here. We're up to here in taxes. I came here in 1996. It was a beautiful town, I love being here, I don't want it destroyed. We cannot afford you and what you're trying to do in this town.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jordan.
Pam Prestus, Central Street.
Excuse me, excuse me, it's delayed. I take people as they get up to the mic, so Ms. Jordan, you were next.
Diane Jordan, Bancroft Street. So I attended the meeting at the Venus and watched all the Advisory Board meetings, and there was, every question wasn't answered. They were talking about metal, like lifts to lift the car, if this doesn't pass to lift the car, or if does pass, I don't know. They couldn't answer any questions, they have no concrete plans for any of their plans. There's no answers to any of the details in any of it, Mr. Moderator. And also, this is kind of being presented like this elevation issue applies only to this project, but Brant Rock has other businesses, there's other commercial mixed-use properties there on that same side. So if this passes, it's not just gonna allow these guys to build this monstrosity, but also free up all those other properties to develop as well. So they keep talking about revitalization, and the cornerstones of revitalization, there's two main cornerstones of revitalization of a community, and the first one is listen to the community. And the second one is respect the ecosystem. So they're not revitalizing. They wanna build a for-profit 80-to-90-unit apartment complex, that's not revitalizing Brant Rock. Revitalize it with, you know, some smaller, you know, a couple of townhouses or something, or some businesses that will bring in income for somebody other than your family. And, Mr. Moderator, I would appreciate it, next time when somebody's doing a five-minute proposal, that they get kept to five minutes, as every other person has been and should be.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rear microphone.
Pam Prestus, Central Street. About 15 years ago, we were regulars at Arthur &amp; Patterson, they had told us that they wanted to get out. So we got the papers from the Town Hall, and we had them looked at, and we were told, "Stay away from this, there's so much red tape with the conservation, the wetlands, the flooding, all the zoning," and they said, "Stay away from it, it's a bad investment." And I think that either this group was not advised of that, but why don't we have the CPC funds, give them what they paid for it, and we can make it into something that everybody can live with? I lived at this end of town for 22 years, and there's a lot of space here. Down there, I've lived down there for six years. We're on top of each other, and things that your neighbor does impact you, because you could practically touch their houses. And to bring in 87 units, they were asked if they would compromise and lower the units, and they said, "No," they wanted as many as they were legally allowed to put in there for as cheaply as possible, is what they said at the event. And this decision really impacts us in Brant Rock, because as it is now, the cars driving by my house, since that rotary thing's going, is twice as many as it used to be, because cars and boat trailers and trucks can't get through the new roundabout, so I can't imagine what's gonna happen if you put in 87 units and then 200 cars. Where are 200 cars going to go? There's no parking, the water's gonna be rushing over the seawall, and you're gonna have little old ladies out there getting their cars up on the ramps with the salt water rushing down. It just doesn't make sense. It's not about revitalizing it, so I implore everybody, please vote no, because this really will ruin, ruin the esplanade. Thank you.
Lady from the rear microphone.
Hi.
Lady, lady in the back. Like I said, I take people as they get up to the microphone, so...
Carol Gage, 74 Leland Road. So I've been in town since 1978, before the sewage was put in, and we've just been putting on and putting on and putting on, and it's already close to overflowing, but that's not the problem I see. I see that we're gonna use car lifts, which have electrical, and the car lifts in Boston that are being used down on Traveler Street, they're a nightmare, okay? That's from a company that I used to work at, all right? I see that when I have people coming in from California, and my seawall is going over the wall and coming down, and we can't visit where Arthur &amp; Patterson's or Venus, because there's DPW trucks in front of, in front of where the, what do you call it, right on 139 saying, "No, you can't go." How are we gonna get people home? I know last year, I have pictures of Eric Murphy driving somebody in a roadboat home, okay? I have pictures, and that was just as late as last year, after all the improvements were made. Now, I also see that when I leave town, because I'm in the acre section, I often go Duxbury, because there is no way to get out of Marshfield after 2:00 on a weekend day or a weekday. In the summer, how am I gonna get 87 more houses, apartments rather, out of town? You haven't made that clear. We don't have room in my schools. I don't think that they have taken into account, when the electricity's out, how am I gonna get my damn car off whatever floor I'm on? You know what I mean? I don't think anybody who's, anybody is looking at that. I did.
You're at, you're at your limit, thank you. One of the things to bear in mind with this is, we're not having a referendum on the whole project, just on the parking, that's what we're talking about.
I understand, but the parking is part of it, sir.
I'm sorry, your, your, your time is up, but thank you very much for your comments.
I'm sorry, but I didn't hear the same thing for the other guy, but the parking is what we're talking about. So I'm going to, I'm going to respect it, but I wish you would let the other people who you want to have speak, respect the same thing. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome, in the front.
Thank you. Mary Murphy, 252 Ocean Street. So it's, guys, I think what you're trying to do is a little bit expanded, and I think in some ways that this definitely will not revitalize Brant Rock. And in particular, I think I'd mentioned when we had the meeting, that I was very concerned that the town doesn't even notify people now when Brant Rock esplanade floods, right? There's no, like, I don't know where the police are, but there's no real safety protocols. They shut down the esplanade, nobody knocks on the doors, cars float away. Who is gonna be the one with these 87 or 200 cars when they float? And my second question, because I'm running out of time, is to Chris Rowland. Mr. Rowland, I'm wondering, how many people on the Advisory Board live in a flood zone, in particular in Brant Rock?
Mr. Rowland, would you like to answer that?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
I don't know how many live in the...
You don't know how many live in a flood zone? I'm only, I'm curious, only because it seems to me that there's an awful lot of people within the coastal area that don't support this, but the Advisory Board really did, as did the Select Board. And so Lynn, I think I heard Mr. Maresco say it was a fantastic idea at a meeting, that was a Select Board meeting, and I could probably bring up the video. So I'm just curious, how does the town feel about this? The Advisory Board, we heard, they approve it, we don't know how many people live in a flood zone, so that we don't know if they ever have to move their cars when it's high tide, when it floods. I have to move my car three or four times a year. You're gonna be expecting 85 to 90 people to do that, and you're okay with that? You don't know where they're gonna move. Where are they gonna move to?
Okay. You don't, I mean, it's, again, we're talking about the parking here, you're talking about the whole development.
I'm talking about parking, I'm talking about parking. Where would they move to, Mr. Rowland? Where would you expect these 100 cars to move to?
It's, we're not gonna get badgering...
Okay, or the police? Could the police maybe help us with the plan and the esplanade, so when it does flood?
It's not, it's their plan to put this in the esplanade, it's not...
Okay, well, I'm just thinking the town, when they're approving these things, also need to check in with the residents that live there, to make certain that you're thinking of all the questions, that's all. Thank you.
Rear microphone.
Danielle Conant.
You can tilt that microphone up, I can't hear you.
Sorry. Danielle Conant, 133 R. Old Ocean Street, Marshfield. My family's been here since the Mayflower. I don't care what your logistics are. I think it's offensive.
I still can't hear you, if you can get a little closer.
I think everything on this plan is offensive, and I think that we should all vote no. That's it. Keep marshaled, marshaled.
Front microphone. Lady at the front.
June Williams, 81 Franklin Street in Brant Rock. I've lived in Brant Rock since about 1970, and I've lived through countless floods, high tides, flooding events, and about the, you know, dozen or so people that live on the esplanade, they move their car to higher ground, they move their car to either the Brant Rock Market parking lot, or to the Old Stone Chapel on the lawn. And my question for the Drosopolis brothers is, where do you envision that the 87, 100 or more cars are going to move to when there's a flood?
Okay. May I, Mr. Moderator? Thank you. We have had thoughts, we were gonna, you know, we haven't got to that point yet, but we had thoughts to speak to our police department, to get a flood emergency activation plan in order, to make mandatory movement of people's cars. I mean, and we were gonna be in talks with the St. Anne's Church to maybe move the cars up to there in a higher ground, and make a donation to the church every time we need to use their parking lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rear microphone.
Good evening, everybody. Eric Murphy, Ocean Street. So I'm against this plan, and for a number of reasons. The 25 years I've lived there, I've seen 20 floods waist-deep, I've seen floods up to my chest. We've called Emergency Operations Center at least three times to have them come down and rescue people out of cars in the floodwater. Sean Patterson, I called him directly, they had to send a backhoe down and pick somebody up out of a car. It's always been notorious in Marshfield that when there's a storm, there's three brand-new cars parked in front of Arthur &amp; Patterson's. Arthur &amp; Patterson's hasn't been open in 15 years. Why are these three cars there? For insurance reasons, okay? If there's 100 cars that get flooded underneath this building, you know who's gonna pay the insurance bills on that? Everybody in the O2O district, okay? It gets paid back to you. You're gonna feel that next time and the time after, these cars are gonna flood. Also, I have a question for the, I believe it's the Harbor Master. Back in the MBTA grants that we were going to lose, it was said that there was a $900,000 grant for the town pier to floodproof the town pier parking lot from the floods. Is that, is that true or not?
It's a little bit beyond the scope of the article, but, Mr. DeMayo, do you have any...
Okay, well, my question would be, is that we're gonna spend...
I'm asking, so...
Okay.
Do you have any comment?
Mr. Moderator, good evening. A question again, Mr. Murphy?
There was, during the MBTA grants that might be potentially lost during the Chumtown meetings we had, where we voted them, there was a recommendation that the town pier had a $900,000 grant in line for floodproofing of the town pier parking area. Is that true?
Mr. Moderator, no. The town did lose $261,600 for permanent engineering of the South and North Rivers. I have submitted grants for $6.9 million to the federal government to raise the elevation around the Harbor Master Building down to the boat ramp. Those funds were not approved by the federal government, and that project sits idle.
But, but you were looking for $6.9 million to make the harbor, keep the cars dry, correct? And now we're looking to add another 200 and some odd cars below the flood plain in the lowest part in Marshfield. I vote no on this, and I'm, my canoe is not gonna take 100 people, I'm sorry. You'll have to call for records. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got five people at the mic, I think it's pretty clear that we're ready to vote on this, but I'm gonna allow these five people to speak, and that's gonna be it. Front mic.
Hi, Tom Keen, Strawberry Farm Road. I just have a question, Mr. Moderator. Who on the Advisory Board said they support this? I don't recall who was speaking at the beginning.
Who on the Advisory Board supported it?
I thought they said that they support this. And why does it say unanimous vote not to support on the slide?
It was a six to two vote to support.
To support. Why does it say unanimous vote not to support?
So...
That was in the original article. Once the article was amended, and the change in the number of parking spaces was removed, they revoted the article.
Okay, thank you.
Rear microphone.
Kelly Drosopolis, 588 Holly Road. I just wanted to get up here, I felt that I needed to just clarify something that I've heard a couple times about the roundabout in Brant Rock. The Drosopolis has had nothing to do with the building or proposition of that roundabout, so just to clarify that. I also just wanted to state that we're here to vote on elevated parking, so for so much animosity and anger to come up here about topics, this is not a free-for-all, this is supposed to be something that we're voting on, it would be nice if the board could support maybe toning that back a little bit, because I just don't find it fair for people to be berated like this, and just to stay on topic. And then my other point is, most importantly, if this doesn't work out, somebody else will buy this property and they'll build, and they won't care the way that these guys care, and they'll build it as big as they wanna build it, and that, that will be that. So I just wish everybody would just be a little more open to just step by step by step of the process, and just focus on the elevated parking. And if you don't agree with the elevated parking, absolutely, vote against it. I'm not here to tell you what to do, how to feel, I just am asking, just for a little more community and less anger from people when we're doing this. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Front microphone. Mr. Kelly.
Eric Kelly, Peterson Path. Mr. Moderator, are we still voting on the amendment?
No, that was approved.
That was approved, all right. Obviously, I missed that one, but, so, so I guess going on, if the amendment was approved, I was just wondering if the, the planning board was, was in favor, if they had that brought before them, before the amendment was presented.
Rephrase that, I'm sorry, I didn't pick up.
I was wondering if the planning board had the amendment brought before them.
Speak of the devil. Here comes Mr. Gaiman.
The planning board met tonight. We were not shown the information that you guys were shown here. The board voted three to one in favor of the amendment.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Sharnesy.
I vote, Bob Sharnesy, Board of Public Works. I'm not necessarily against development in Brant Rock, but I believe from what's being proposed here, is way too premature to ask for a concession at this point. You know, we're looking at an 87 apartment development in a tight, tight, extremely tight area with floods, and they're asking for us a consensus of, to allow them to do on-street parking. I think it's way premature to vote in favor of this, from the standpoint that... I think it's way premature to vote in favor of this from the standpoint that we don't know what the whole project's all about, so I would urge people to vote no.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, just wanted to be clear, Mr. Shaughnessy, I believe said on-street parking. We're calculating over 200 parking spaces that will be below the building. So currently now with the parking down in Brant Rock, we will be creating 200 additional spaces.
Okay. Lynn, go ahead. Steve, I had said that we would be done with those guys, so unless you've got something quick at the end.
I have something, I have something real quick.
Okay. Lynn, go ahead.
Lynn Fidler, Brook Road. I am here to say, this is the first time I've met these gentlemen, I want to be clear about the importance of all of us participating in understanding projects of this nature. And the, the previous comment that the Select Board is in favor of this is very difficult for me to hear, since I am seeing this project just like our residents here are seeing it. So the point is, is that when you do bring a project in front of the town, whether or not you meet with the town administrator, the Select Board, the Planning Board, whoever you're meeting with, it needs to be upfront, and the people in the neighborhoods need to understand it, but not just in Brant Rock. We all pay a price in what happens in all our precincts. So I appreciate the fact that you're here, you're making an attempt to do something with that property, but I'm not in favor of this, as I have just heard it for the first time.
Steve Lynch, 50th Central Street. I don't have a question, I have a point of order.
Sure.
So this is, this article is about parking, not housing. This should be a two-thirds vote.
There was, there was a discussion about that originally. Town Council thought it was a two-thirds vote. There was some other legal precedents that were brought up that had it come back down to a majority vote.
The rule is housing gets a majority vote.
And Town Council looked at it.
Two-thirds for parking. So you're going to have a lawsuit on your hand one way or the other if it does pass, because it's, it's illegitimate to let this go with a majority vote. It's a parking article, not a housing article.
I'll have him speak to it.
So there was an amendment made to Chapter 48, Section 5, that allows improvements such as this, which have the effect of, and let me get you the exact language. If the elimination of the elevated parking requirement makes it, makes it more economically feasible to fix, to build mixed-use projects and add even market-rate housing, it's a majority vote under Chapter 48, Section 5, 2B. And there's an opinion from the Attorney General that relates exactly to this issue, and it's not something that the town likes, or anybody here probably likes, but that is the law, changed by the state to encourage more housing.
Yeah, but it's not in our bylaws, right?
It's state laws who are obligated to comply with.
So we can take it to the SJC, then?
Someone may challenge that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, as you just heard with that last discussion, this is a majority vote, not a two-thirds vote. So we have the amended article, so we are only voting on the elevated parking. So all of those, and be clear, if you're voting in the affirmative, you're supporting eliminate, you're supporting eliminating the elevated parking. If you're voting against, you are voting in favor of the elevated parking. That's what the differences are, correct?
Yes, that's exactly.
Yeah. If you're voting, if you're voting for their article, you're voting to eliminate the elevated parking. If you're voting against their article, you're voting to keep the elevated parking. So everybody's clear on what their vote does.
Hold on, I can't talk four times.
Wait, wait.
You've explained it exactly correct.
Yeah. If you're voting in favor of this article, you are voting to eliminate the elevated parking as a requirement. If you're voting against this article, you are voting to keep the elevated parking as a requirement. That's what this vote is for. It's whether or not you're voting for or against elevated parking. That's what we're voting on.
Point of order, sir.
Yes?
Are you, are we voting for or, for parking or not parking?
That's what I just said. If you vote in favor of this article, you are voting to eliminate the need for elevated parking. You're talking ground.
Okay, but are you still voting for a parking, parking garage?
This, this article only is voting for whether or not there's elevated parking. That's what the purpose of this article is.
Point of order.
Yeah?
Could you just please say it simply?
It's as simply as I can say it. If you vote in favor of this article, you are voting.
I'm not asking for, I'm not asking for me. If, if you vote in favor of the article, you're voting for the change in elevated parking that the proponent is seeking. If you vote against the article, you're voting for no change in the current bylaw.
Correct. You're voting.
So that's putting it simply.
The bylaw currently states that you need.
What they motioned was to do? I'm confused. I thought they withdrew the proposed thing, which was one car, and they went back to the 1.25.
That, that got voted down. So there is no change in the number of cars of parking spaces.
So can you read, what is the, what are we voting on?
The only thing we are voting for at this point is whether or not there is elevated parking. The current bylaw calls for elevated parking. The proponent has put forth an article to eliminate that requirement. So if you support the proponents, which means you're voting in favor of the article, then you're voting for ground-floor parking.
So are we, are we getting parking either way? Is that what you're saying?
There's, the whole issue, this article is only about whether there's parking elevated or there's parking.
Excuse me, point of order. If we vote no, that means this project stays or goes.
It has nothing to do with whether this part, this project goes forward or not. All we're voting for is parking. The existing bylaw requires elevated parking.
So if we vote no, this project doesn't happen?
No, that's not true.
Excuse me, Jim, Jim, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
When they first got up to do their presentation, they said they had a motion to change what we have here.
They, they changed the park, there was a, in the beginning part of that article, there was a motion, or there was part of the article said to change it from 1.25 parking spaces per bedroom to one.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't.
And they eliminated, they abandoned that change. They, they put an amendment on their article at the very beginning that says that they were abandoning that change. So there was.
What change? The word says as.
The change from 1.25 parking spaces to one, that was part of their original article. There were two phases. One was changing the number of parking spaces, the second one was getting rid of the elevated parking. So their first amendment, their amendment.
Could you just read what the proposal is that they're doing? Because what I see is as it reads now and as proposed. And I thought they had a motion to change as proposed.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to put it up on the screen.
Okay, good.
So that may solve this question.
Point of order, hold on. So it sounds like this project is going no matter what. Whether we get elevated parking or not, the housing is going to go in.
They, they could decide to go forward with the project with flat parking, they could decide to go forward with elevated. All we're talking about is parking, not about the project. This is nothing to do with the project itself.
But it's into wine. Why are they up there proposing it with the big houses on the top? It's all incorporated.
All this, all we're talking about here is parking, not about the project.
Right, but it's all incorporated in their long-term project.
It's not my project. All I can say is what I've got in front of me for what we've been deciding on, which is whether or not to go with.
Can you, I'm sorry. Can you just read what the, what we're voting on? Because I see 1.25 parking spaces or one.
They're, they're pulling it together to put it on the screen so it's clear.
And if we want no parking, period, do we need to put an amendment together? Is that what you're asking for us to do?
No.
Mr. Moderator, may I make an actual point of order?
Sure, Matt.
Thank you. Matt Pamela, 2 Missouri Street. There is obviously a huge amount of misunderstanding about what we're talking about. I think we need to discuss it just a little bit longer. Is that okay?
They're, they're putting this together so it's clear.
I understand that, but these people don't understand what we're talking about at all.
Which is why hopefully if it gets on the screen.
May I, may I ask a couple of questions that I think will clear it up?
Sure.
Okay. A number of years ago, the Brant Rock Village overlay district was created. Yes?
That would be a Planning Board question, but.
Yes.
Please, come on, man, let him do his job.
He said yes.
All right.
And Greg is now coming up to the front.
When that, when that was created, a member of the floor came up and added the elevated parking as an amendment, correct?
As I recall, that is correct. Yes.
So that was not part of our town administration's plan?
That would be a next question for Greg.
The original language from 2014 did not mention anything. About three or four years ago, I brought an article up to town meeting, and elevated parking was should, not shall, or recommended, not required. There was a floor amendment that made it requirement.
Thank you.
And that floor amendment was approved, yes?
All right. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not done. I'm trying to help. This entire article, what we're actually talking about here, is only about a zoning bylaw change for the Brant Rock Village, correct?
Correct.
It does affect a development these guys want to put in.
Correct.
It does not necessarily stop their development, either way.
Correct.
Now, here, a little more complicated question. If the elevated parking stays in, does anybody up there think it's financially feasible for any business to come in and build a new building in that area?
Above my pay grade.
Well, we've got people up there.
We had asked for information, we did not receive, receive any financial information. It will definitely make it more expensive for redevelopment of the Brant Rock area.
All right. I would speculate that it's going to be nearly impossible to build a building the size of, say, Arthur &amp; Pat's with elevated parking and be financially feasible and make a profit and stay in business. It's not going to happen.
I wouldn't disagree with that, but.
Okay, thank you. A lot of people are talking about the history of Brant Rock and, and the way it always has been. People are, 20 years ago, there used to be movie theaters and bowling alleys down there, right?
Point of order, what's he talking about?
I think I'm talking about.
I'm fine with it right now. There's enough confusion going on. Matt's trying to solve the confusion. I'm 100% behind him.
Thank you. All right. So all we are talking about, this entire article, is about whether or not we are going to keep the requirement for new businesses to have elevated parking or not.
Correct.
If we keep it, it is unlikely anybody's going to build a new building in Brant Rock. If we eliminate it, it makes it more possible for anybody to build a new building in Brant Rock. Yes or no?
I think that, that to me is the crux of what could or could not happen.
Thank you.
You're certainly putting, by do, by requiring the elevated parking, it increases building costs for obvious reasons. If you eliminate it, you get rid of those building costs and it makes it more financially feasible to do things. This discussion, this article, and we're not going to discuss this article anymore. All we're trying to do is make it so that you're all clear in what the vote does. This is a discussion on whether or not the elevated parking maintains to be a requirement in the Bravo District, or whether it's not required. If we vote, and this is what it gets down to, that their article is looking to eliminate the elevated parking requirement. So for them to build their development, it is more economically feasible for them not to have the requirement to have raised parking. So if you support their article, which means you're supporting them eliminating the raised parking as part of their requirement, so you vote in favor of their article, you're voting in favor of eliminating the raised parking requirement. If you vote against their article, if you vote no, then you're voting to maintain the existing requirement to have elevated parking. That's the decision. It has nothing to do whether their project is, still remains economically feasible or not. The question on the table is not whether or not there's traffic or Brant Rock is going to flood or any of that. This is all only about whether or not there's elevated parking. So a vote in favor of this article is a vote in support of eliminating elevated parking. If you vote against this article, then you're voting to leave the elevated parking as a requirement. Is that clear now? So there, this is what's up here right now.
This is what's being considered right now.
This is the article as amended. So as you can see, it's 1.2 parking spaces for each bedroom unit and all residential units required. That stays the same. Residential parking should be separate from commercial parking area and should be sited to the sides and the rear of the building. Commercial parking shall be provided on-site.
Where's the part about the elevated parking?
It is required that the, so the deleted part. Yeah, go ahead.
Take your time. So the IT Department is putting this up now. The, the section 1505 is actually 1305, they're going to make that change. But as amended, this is what you're being asked to vote on. The proponent is asking to delete the last sentence of 1305K, which requires elevated parking. That's all they're asking you to vote on. If you're in favor of deleting that, you'll vote in favor of this amended article. If you're not in favor of deleting the elevated parking requirement, oppose the article.
So are we, are we clear now?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah?
We're, um, pawn this in my discussion earlier in regards to the amended article, which was, I was told was voted on, but obviously it wasn't.
The amendment, there was an original amendment.
There was an original one, but then you have this one. So going back to my original question.
You spoke already on this.
We're trying to come to a solution here, so I don't accept your point of order, as far as that goes, but wait just a second.
This is the effect of the earlier amendment.
The earlier amendment is that we want it at 1.25.
Right. Not 1 to 1. This is 1.25. That was the, that's the effective amendment. The original article was to make it 1 to 1, not 1. The existing bylaw is 1.25. It is. See, the original, this is the existing bylaw, 1.25. They were proposing to make it 1 to 1. So this is the current amended bylaw.
That's the amended bylaw, that it's leaving it at 1.25. The original amendment, they got rid of that.
Oh, so, oh, yeah.
They did not amend it to, to get rid of that bottom section.
That's it. This is, this is the right one.
Okay.
Trust me, this is right. I know it is.
All right. So what happened was there was originally a plan to go from 1.25 to 1. That was the original amendment. They got rid of that provision in their article. What's left is whether or not we get rid of, we do this, and get rid of the requirement for residential, residential parking to be located above the base flood elevation. That's the remaining article. So if, if you don't want to change that elevated, elevated, that elevated parking, if you, if you want to change the elevated parking, you want to make it ground-floor parking, then you're supporting this article. That's what it is. If you vote yes, you're saying, okay, I don't need the elevated parking.
That doesn't change.
If you vote no, I don't support that amendment, that change in the language. If you vote no, then the elevated parking stays.
All right.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator.
Really?
Hold on.
Okay.
The whole thing is that, in the confusion of our discussion in regards to what I brought up, that I wasn't talking about the original amendment, I was talking about this one.
Right. Right.
So I was asking Mr. Gaiman, the planning, the town planning, Mr. Gaiman, if the Planning Board had a heads-up on this and was able to discuss it, where they, if they were voted on it. So he gave a vote count of the previous amendment, so I want to know if there was any discussion, if they knew about this amendment ahead of time.
Mr. Gaiman.
That is what I said earlier. The Planning Board met tonight.
On this amendment?
On this amendment.
Okay.
And voted three to one in favor, but we did not see the things that were then shown at town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if you've got one last question, really, we've discussed this whole thing, I think it's pretty clear at this point, if not.
Mr. Moderator, Nicole Molinari, I would like to push for a vote, please.
Pardon me?
I just have a. I want a vote, please.
I accept that.
Just a clarifying question, please. Francesca Shikovskaya, Eight Ninety-Five Webster Street. Just to confirm, to clarify, what we are looking at, the elevated parking requirement only applies to residential development. It is not about any new structure. It applies specifically to residential and not commercial development in Brant Rock. Just to clarify.
I'm not, I wouldn't speculate that it's only.
Well, I mean, that's what we're looking at on the screen. It says residential parking can be located above the base flood elevation.
Yeah, we're not talking about any other development, we're talking.
No, 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 just to clarify for exactly what we're voting on.
Mr. Gaiman, please.
So this is for, when you're applying for a special permit, mixed-use building, the residential part of that mixed-use building is what's covered by this.
Fantastic, so it does not apply to commercial development in Brant Rock.
Straight commercial or straight residential, you're not required to do this.
Okay. Straight forward question. Thank you so much.
Jim, I can make it real easy in like one sentence.
Try.
A no vote will make it virtually impossible for them to build eighty-nine units.
Okay, so we're going to a vote. I'm going to try this on a, on a hand vote first, not on a standing vote, we'll see how that goes. So all of those in favor, now again, in favor of this article means you want to get rid of the requirement for the elevated parking. All those in favor of this article, raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that the article fails. Okay, before everybody gets up to leave, we have one more article. Come on, you can do it, one more. Go to Article Five. Article Five, the Select Board moves at the town vote to set the fiscal year 2026 total expenditure limitation for the revolving funds under Marshville Town Code, Chapter Ninety-Five, Finance and Budget Section Ninety-Five to Twenty, revolving fund bylaw as set forth in Article Five of the April Twenty-Eighth, Twenty-Six Annual Town Meeting. Mr. Moore.
Yes, this is a annual article that is required to establish the spending limits or the expenditure limits for all the revolving funds that have been previously approved for certain functions within the town, integrated preschool, turf fields, recreation beaches, bus, and senior services. So it's a, it's an annual motion.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley.
The Advisory Board unanimously supports this article.
Thank you. It's going to be a majority vote. Any discussion from the floor? I see none. All those in favor say, we're going to a vote. Do you understand what it was? This is the revolving fund account, it's an annual account. The advisory report was they unanimously approved it. It's an annual article that takes the revolving funds, where money comes in and goes back out. You can see that spelled out in your warrant, it's things, it's pretty clear what it is in there. So it's a majority vote, and I'm calling all in favor of Article Five, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article Five passes. So I have one last bit of business. I move at the special town meeting that the annual town meeting be recessed until Monday, June Second, 2025, at seven PM at Marshville High School for further reconsideration of the ATM Articles Two through Four and Seven. All those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, and we are done. Thank you very much.